I now call on the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February 5th at six thirty-two. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor, who's this?
Here.
Commissioner Slattery here. Mr. Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Turepini.
Here.
Tonight's number change will be given by Reverend Doug Zipperer, First United Methodist Church. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance following.
Let us pray. Lord, I just want to thank you for such a beautiful day today and for all your goodness. We ask tonight that your blessing will be upon our leaders, that you will help them to conduct and lead us in the business that is before us, that you'll guide all of our actions in such a manner that all that we do will be good for all the citizens whom we serve. We ask now, Lord, your blessing upon our citizens, keep them safe, and guard them with your loving care, and grant us always your peace. May you be glorified in all these things. I pray this in my Lord's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with never cease, just as for all. We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. If you have something, please come forward, state your name, address, and you'll be given up to four minutes.
My name is Greg Eelen. I live at seventeen oh two Richard Urban Parkway in Tarpon Springs, Florida. I was here six months ago, and I wanted to talk to everybody about Richard Urban Park. I brought some more pictures for everybody, so look at them. The problem with Richard Urban Park is no one takes care of it. The fence is falling down on both sides, and I live on the east side of the park. There's another house that's for sale. It's over a million dollars, and it's falling down over there. Pavement hasn't been touched in over twelve years. The pavilions are damaged. They're rotting. They have mold on them. The Brazilian pepper tree, which is not native and it's growing inside, a cypress tree, is now doubled in size in the last six months. The overgrowth on the shoreline is now starting to take the fence out that was put up about seven years ago. There's several pictures of that. But nothing's changed in six months. Nothing... They come out, they mow it, but no maintenance has been done on the park. It just sits there. The city... Panellus County does not take care of the lake growth, ever. There was an article written about six months ago saying Panellus County was responsible for the shoreline vegetation. They are not. The only vegetation that swift mud or Panellus County will take care of is anything that blocks a waterway or a channel. And if you're sitting in the park benches, you're looking out, all you're seeing is the overgrowth. You're not seeing any water view at all. And some of the pictures I took show you exactly what your view would be if you're sitting at a bench trying to look at the lake. If the City of Tarpon doesn't want to take care of this park, they should sell this piece of property. It's on the lake. It's in a housing division, but we need to do something with it. I spend a lot of money on taxes, and so do all my neighbors who live in the area, including Commissioner Larson, who lives up on the hill above me. But we need to do something with the park. I know it's not... It's a very small park. It's probably the smallest park in Tarpon Springs, but just mowing it is not what it needs. It needs to be taken care of, or the alternative is to go ahead and sell it. Sell it to a realtor, to a developer, to build a house on. It's a nice piece of property right on the lake. I wish you guys would do something, though. Thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate it.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say this is that if there's no objection, I would like to ask that the city manager would look at that parcel in terms of what are we going to do to either repair it, what is our plan? I apologize, Mr. Eelen. I definitely don't like people to come twice saying something to us about something that we're not doing. So I'm not sure will we have any type of report on that, but I would ask that we could get some type of follow-up and plan as to what we're going to do with that parcel.
We have looked at that, and we do have some plans, and Mr. Function, I'll make sure he gets a hold of Mr. Eelen again and gives him the information to contact him, and we'll keep him updated and keep the board updated.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that six months ago when Mr. Eelen came, there was a plan that was put in place. There was an email that listed kind of an action plan of what was going to happen. It sounds like none of that has happened yet, so I guess...
But you'll be seeing the paving. We're waiting for the paving contract, which I believe you're going to be seeing next meeting or the one after, and that's going to be in... As our paving for our paving for this year comes in, the paving portion of it. We've also got some plans for the shelters and that, and we'll bring those back to you. But it involves timing around the budget, the paving schedule, that sort of thing. So we'll get that information and remind him of the numbers that he can call Mr. Function and get weekly updates if he wants about the project.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hello. My name is Petros Nicholas. I'm owner of Agora Food Market on Athens Street. We're a small Greek grocery store. We cater to the Greek community. And one thing we're having an issue with is complete lack of street parking. I'm getting calls daily that people are actually saying that we want to come in, we want to shop, but we're scared that we're going to get tickets, which is understandable. There's a loading zone, which is till eleven AM. But I'm asking if it's possible to have like permit parking, something just like a five, ten-minute loading zone. With shops down here, including mine, customers come in, do their shopping, and then leave.
This is your time to talk. I mean, if you want a response, what I'll do is we'll ask the city manager to look at that and then try to get back with you in terms of what... But I'm not at liberty to say, yes, we'll do that. No, we're not. So we heard what you have to say. What we'll do is we'll ask the city manager and some of his staff to maybe get back with you to try to see where we're at with that, if it's possible, looking at it from a safety perspective and all of that. So if you have any additional comments, you could make those now.
Well, I mean, right around the corner, there's actually street parking, but it's only about four spaces. They're taken up early in the morning, and they're pretty much there all day. For the whole, pretty much the entire Athens Street, there's not really any street parking. So I mean, people are like getting cars, like I said, every day, and people are just scared to come down because they're scared to get tickets. You know, hard economic times. They're just scared of it.
And as I said, we'll look at it. We'll have the city manager to get with you. I would suggest that as long as it's had certain signs up there, that they should not park there because they probably will get a ticket. So what I'm saying to you is that we'll ask the city manager and staff to look into it, see if there's something that can be changed, if there's a compromise. But as of right now, they should not park there. They should look for some other parking until staff has a chance to look at the situation.
There was a complete Athens Street study done, and that's why there is no parking. We'd be glad to have someone from the police department go down to you and show it to you, explain to you why there's parking places and there's not parking places and stuff, so we'd be glad to have that someone from the police department go over and go over that plan that we did for the parking situation.
Mr. Mayor, would I like to comment on that if I could?
Yes, sir.
I would like to express my concern on that issue because I know that all these businesses down there, they have an issue to... The customers cannot actually get out and pick up their goods after they do their shopping. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Mayor, you brought that up once before. I think it was like six months, a year ago. That issue still, it's there. That store just now opened, the grocery store, they have the same issue. The National Bakery, it has the same issue. Customers are not... They're afraid actually to stop to do their shopping. They're losing business. I will request that we reevaluate the parking situation there, see who can help these businesses there, so they can be successful.
Well, what I would ask is that whatever is conveyed to them, that the commission get a copy of that, then we can weigh it out in which way. Like I say, if it's a loading zone, then there is parking there, at least temporarily, so...
Right. It's a loading zone, but we're in between six AM and eleven AM.
And I'm saying it's quite, but it won't be resolved tonight, is what I'm trying to share with you. And that, you know, we'll have staff to look at it, and we'll look at what's there now and see what can be done as far as the future.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll go to proclamations. First proclamation is American Heart Month. This proclamation reads, "Whereas every year heart diseases take their lives of over half a million Americans and where it remains the leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas there are major factors for heart disease that can be controlled by maintaining a healthy weight, diet, and exercise, and other healthy lifestyle choices. And whereas working with a healthcare provider can help prevent or treat conditions that can lead to heart disease, and whereas Congress designated February as American Heart Month in nineteen sixty-three to highlight the importance of the ongoing fight against cardiovascular disease. Now therefore, I David O'Archie by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand thirteen as American Heart Month. In the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and I encourage all of our residents to remember all of the steps that each of us can take to reduce the risk of heart disease and recommit to better heart health." Well, Mayor, this has one thing to add. The next proclamation is in recognition of Black History Month. And this ring proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, where as the recognition of Black History originated in nineteen twenty-six by Claudia Woodson. Woodson chose the second week of February because it marks the birthdays of two great... Two Americans who greatly influenced the lives and social conditions of African-Americans. Former President Abraham Lincoln and abolitionist, and former slave Frederick Douglass. And whereas Association for the Study of African-American Life and History this year is dedicating Black History Month to mark the fiftieth and one hundred and fiftieth year anniversary respectfully of two parallel events occurring in eighteen sixty-three and nineteen sixty-three. President Abraham Lincoln's Advanc- Advancation Proclamation freeing all slaves in the United States and its full central later nineteen sixty-three marked the tipping point in the Civil Rights Movement to March on Washington event that remains in the lives, remains in the living memory of many older Americans today. And whereas the above are themes of this year's Black History Month, it's also worth noting that the two thousand thirteen marks the fiftieth anniversary of Martin Luther King's I Have a Dream speech, which was delivered at March, delivered at the March on Washington. And two thousand thirteen also is the inauguration of the second term of Obama presidency itself, a historic event. And whereas finally, in keeping with the above, but on a much lesser note, two thousand thirteen was also the year in which the newly created movie Lincoln created an unprecedented level of popular cultural discussion about the US Civil War and the character of President Lincoln himself. Now therefore, I David O'Archie by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand thirteen as Black History Month. Are there any public comments on either one of these items? Hearing none, we'll go to our consent agenda. First item is item three minutes, November sixth, two thousand twelve, regular session. November twentieth, two thousand twelve, regular session. December fourth, two thousand twelve, regular session. December eighteenth, two thousand twelve, regular session. January eighth, two thousand thirteenth, regular session. Four satisfaction release of leaves. Five special events. A, Fish, Earth Day Hook Kids on Fishing, April twentieth, Tarpon Springs Recreation Division. B is Plant Sale Garden Club of Tarpon Springs, April thirteenth. Thirty-ninth Annual Tarpon Springs Fine Arts Festival, and that'll be April sixth through the seventh via the Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce. Six is approved agreement between the City of Tarpon Springs and the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation. Seven authorized utilization of Miami-Dade County Contract Number four nine zero seven dash three slash thirteen OTR Playground Equipment, Playground and Park Equipment for the purchase of fitness equipment. Eight is increased file number zero nine zero zero five nine C, Panellus County Contract Number zero eight nine dash zero one four eight D. SS Spinston Chain Link and Miscellaneous Co-op. Nine is increased file number zero nine zero zero four four V, HVAC Maintenance and Repair. Ten is extend file number zero nine zero 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 two dash C, Electrical Products Due to U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement Number four three two seven two. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull?
Yeah.
Any public comments on any of these items? Hearing none, children entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Turepini.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery, yes. Vice Mayor, who's this?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. We'll now move to special consent item number eleven, Select Wharton Hyten Smith Incorporated Construction Group for RLP Number one two zero zero eight six dash T dash JJ Design Bill of the City of Tarpon Springs Alternative Water Supply Project.
Good evening, Paul Smith Public Services Director. This is a significant milestone for the city, our project partner, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, and the Alternative Water Supply Project in particular. Tonight, there are several items on the agenda that serve to fund and initiate construction of the water supply facilities, including the pipelines, wellheads, and treatment facilities. This first item is to select the design builder to construct the facility. The members of our evaluation committee chaired by Bob Robertson were composed of staff from several departments. The committee, along with the purchasing division and with the assistance of the engineering firm CDM Smith, put in a lot of work to ensure that we have an experienced, top-ranked team to build our project for us with an opportunity for innovation to benefit the city. I'll ask Bob to give a little more detail on the selection.
Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager and Project Manager for the Alternative Water Supply Project. Just a quick note, some comments about the evaluation procedure. We received three very good proposals for this project, which I think we should expect, because it's a very good project. Evaluation process included not only price, but other qualitative criteria as well, such as an evaluation of the overall technical approach, the quality of proposed design in terms of its operability, and the aesthetics of the facility, commissioning for facility startup, and training of city personnel, which is important. The proposed construction schedule, and an evaluation of qualifications and the experience of the project manager, design manager, and the construction manager. So all of that accounted for twenty-five percent of the score that you see in your backup. The remaining seventy-five percent was based on the price. So we're pleased tonight to request your approval of the evaluation committee's recommendation for awards of the design bill contract to the Wharton Smith Petrotech R and R O team. And if there are any questions, I'm here for that.
For me, it's just I'm glad this project is coming forward. And how much of the Swift Mud, Mud Grant will be able to use for this, if any?
The Swift Mud Grant was for twenty point one four million, and we'll be able to use all of it.
Any other questions, question?
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, sir.
Waiting six years for this item to be approved. Thank you. I have some questions. Probably you already know some of the questions that I will ask you is, since this project is going to be designed and built, is the possibility they might be less than thirty-five thousand, thirty-five million dollars?
It's possible. That is a guaranteed max price.
Okay. How are we going to make sure that we're going to get the best money for the project?
That's a great question. Along the way, there are several things that we'll be doing. Because this is design-built, the design is not a hundred percent complete yet. So there are opportunities while the plant is being built and while parts, portions are being designed to look for values that we can, that we can see in terms of saving money, in terms of reducing costs or getting better quality for the same price. Not only that, Morton Smith and their proposal committed to doing that very thing. We also have oversight not only from City SAPP, but from CDM Smith, who was the design proposal, design criteria engineer, which did the thirty percent design for us. All of those, we have a lot of eyes on the project as we're going through, looking for those opportunities.
Next question is, the water plant is going to be built to be able to reduce six point five million dollars per day. In case that we need, the demand is increasing, can that be expandable?
Expandable. Oh, yes. The maximum capacity, max date capacity is six point four, actually. And yes, there will be room in the facility to expand it if necessary. But by all projections, we're looking at thirty to fifty years of available supply by what we're providing in the treatment plant now. So I don't think we're going to need to, need to expand that time soon. I knocked wood, in case you didn't...
Quality is very important with a project like that. Do we have any process in place that to ensure the quality of the project and how we're going to do that?
Yeah, I'll go back to my first answer on that. Wharton Smith also has an internal QAQC procedure that they laid out very clearly in their proposal. But not only that, again, we have staff oversight as well as oversight from CDM Smith, who was our design criteria professional. So we have a lot of eyes from a lot of experienced people that will be able to watch, keep our eye on quality.
Yeah. You have mentioned that they are going to provide training. Is that going to be some kind of ongoing training to, for the employees, or...
Yeah, as we staff up the plant, because we don't have that staff hired yet, those individuals, the operators, the operating staff, will be a part of the startup of the facility. So when we get ready to start this thing, when we do the functional testing, the acceptance testing, they're going to be there. Not only that, but Wharton Smith's team will also be providing not only the hands-on training, but the classroom training for our operators as well. And that was also part of their proposal included in the pricing.
And my last question is, are they going to provide some kind of technical support for difficult problems?
Absolutely.
And how will they be able to reach those people? Are they be available to be dispatched to the site?
Yes, they will.
It's part of the contract, or is it something...
To clarify, you mean after the facility...
After it's completed, yeah.
Yeah, there's a warranty period during which they'll be available. Not only the contractor, but the vendors, equipment suppliers, they'll all be available through Wharton Smith, through the design build firm, to address any issues we have after startup.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
You're welcome.
Are there any other public comments on the title? Children entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Turepini.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery, yes. Vice Mayor, who's this?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number twelve, approved change order number one to bid number one two zero zero eight one dash B dash JJ Seminole Pump Station Rehabilitation.
This one probably could have been on the consent agenda. I think the amount of the original project probably ended up on special consent, but it's only a nineteen thousand dollar increase, and you can see what that's for. The increase was about an upgrading of the electrical system to pump station, installing new ten-inch horsemen, neither of which was satisfied in the start-up. All of those is added additional nineteen thousand dollars to the project at work, for questions.
Any other public comments on the title? Children entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Turepini.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery, yes. Vice Mayor, who's this?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number thirteen, ratified reopening amendment to the two thousand eleven through the fourteenth agreement between the City of Tarpon Springs and Suncoast Police Benevolent Association.
I'll have Mr. Smith just start off with it, and myself and the chief will be available if there's any other questions about the process and what you see before.
Good evening, our mayor, Mr. Smithers. The city is currently in the middle of, or the second year of a... Can you hear me? Okay. Start that again. The city is currently in year two of a three-year contract with the Suncoast PBA, which started October of two thousand eleven and runs through the end of September of two thousand fourteen. Language in that contract provides for reopeners in years two and three of this contract. And this year, we were able to negotiate some contract language amendments, which are covered in your summary. I'd very briefly like to go over a couple of them. First is the guarantee that we will reopen the contract for pay plan, closing allowance, and the pension for year three. There's an increase in the minimum wage rate effective January third, two thousand thirteen, for the officers, which reflects the need to become more competitive with surrounding agencies in the recruitment process. Secondly, we have employees that received an increase in accordance, virtually not identical, but very similar philosophy used to generate the general employees increases. And I'd kind of like to refresh your memories, because these fall into those ranges. I believe fifty-five thousand and under was two percent, fifty-five to sixty-five was one and a half, sixty-five to seventy-five was one, and seventy-five and above was a half a percent. And these increases that were included in your summary reflect the similar changes to this contract.
Just basically, again, the dilemma we had here, and we were able, again, to enter into these negotiations. We had other factors, including their pension factor, which wasn't going to raise and causes the problem that we're able to do this. The bottom line is, looking at the salary survey every year and looking at what Panellus needs, we had to move a starting salary that had been there for four years. We had no choice, or else you were going to start losing everybody to other agencies, and you weren't going to get people. We had to do something about the starting. That would have been pretty easy for those at bottom, but when you move those up, those two, three, and four-years officers that hadn't got the raises in the years, all of a sudden, you have starting officers and four-to-five-years officers making the same amount of money. That wouldn't work. So we pretty much came up with an equitable thing to correct, to correct the deficiency in the starting pay, to address those people. And then, for the most part, a large number of the other individuals at the police department give them close to very percentage points, hundreds of, tenths of percentage points from what the city workers got into their raise process, which resulted in what you see here and the ability to do that. So that was kind of the philosophy to be able to do and to get to the point where we accomplished those things. And again, try to stay, go down the line, and as close to the city raise as possible and keep it. And those that we had to move strictly because of the starting pay moving up to, again, your person four years wouldn't be making the same as your starting officer you'd be hiring. So this is the product we came up with. We developed this, and the union looked at it and voted to agree to it. But this is our plan that we presented to them, and they agreed to.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Chief?
No, I think Jane, the city manager, explained it all. It's definitely a step in the right direction when it comes to starting pay. You don't want to create compression in the pay scale, so you have to look at everything with people above and move them up accordingly. But I think it's definitely a step in the right direction for us to be competitive with other agencies in Panellus County. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd say I had a chance to talk with the chief about some of this, and I definitely can agree that it might not be where we would like to be as far as continuous pay for our officers are concerned, but it's a step in the right direction. It helps us to be able to recruit and then still be able to maintain. Some of the people have been with us for a little while, so I don't know if there's any questions, comments. Any public comments on the title? Children entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Turepini.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery, yes. Vice Mayor, who's this?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number fourteen, approved settlement agreement in the case of the City of Tarpon Springs versus Madison Professional Building LLC. Not sure if you have any comments. We had a chance to get a little bit more information about this item and understand the... This has been something that the city's been dealing with since two thousand six. Opportunity to put it behind us and to move ahead with what reasonable settlements. I don't know. Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Any public comments on this item? Children entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Tarr Penny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughtery.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, next to have ordinance and resolution, item number fifteen, ordinance twenty twelve dash nineteen Fairhausen Act, first reading. Uh, this is deferred till March fifth, two thousand thirteen, regular session. Uh, item sixteen, the resolution twenty thirteen dash zero six, master bond resolutions for alternative water supply project.
What are you bringing a team up led by Ari Walker? Uh, this is all related to the water plant, so. Oh, yeah.
Resolution two thousand thirteen dash sixteen, a resolution, amending and restating resolution two thousand seven dash twenty-two in its entirety, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed forty-five million utility system revenue bond series two thousand thirteen A to finance the cost of reverse osmosis water plant and related improvements to refund any bond anticipation notes and to pay costs related thereto and not to exceed eighteen million utility system revenue bond series two thousand thirteen, series two thousand thirteen B to finance the cost of certain water and, certain water and sewer capital projects to refund any bond anticipation notes and to pay costs related thereto pledging certain net revenues of the utility system and certain water sewer capital facility fees revenues for the payment of such bonds, providing for the rights of the holders of such bonds, providing for the issuance of temporary bond anticipation notes, making other covenants and agreements in connection therewith, repealing other instruments and providing for an effective date. That's the reading of resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh six by title only.
I'd like to introduce Dwayne Draper from Bryant Miller &amp; Olive. He's our bond counsel and he will, um, give you a brief explanation of the first of three, um, resolutions for your approval.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Dwayne Draper and I'm with Bryant Miller &amp; Olive, uh, in Tampa. And we've had the pleasure of serving as the city's bond counsel since, uh, I had curly hair, which was back around two thousand and two, when we had the first referendum associated with your water and sewer system. Um, this particular resolu-, this particular, uh, set of resolutions that are before you, uh, there are three. Two thousand three dash oh six, which the city attorney just read by title. Two thousand thirteen dash oh seven and two thousand thirteen dash oh eight. Let me briefly summarize what's in those resolutions and what they do. Two thousand thirteen dash oh six, again, the city manager's just read it by title, is your master utility system bond resolution, which will be in place for, for years and decades, it's, uh, associated with your water and sewer utility system debt. It actually amends and restates, um, resolutions which were adopted in, in two thousand and six, that was two thousand six dash sixty-one, and two thousand seven dash twenty-two, which was adopted May first, two thousand and seven. So, this basic resolution's been before you twice before. It's evolved as details of the financing have evolved, and so that's why we bring it back to you tonight, to re-adopt, uh, to put in place your master bond resolution. It was, uh, it authorizes not to exceed forty-five million dollars, uh, utility system revenue bond series two thousand and thirteen A to finance the project we've been discussing tonight. Those bonds have been subject to both a referendum in your community, which was successful, as well as a bond validation in circuit court, which was successful. It subjects your bonds to a pledge, firstly, a pledge of net revenues of the utility system plus impact fees of your utility system. It establishes your flow of funds, your reserves, um, your rate covenant, your additional bonds test, things which are very important to your bondholders, the rating agencies who are rating your bonds, et cetera, in terms of getting, evaluating the overall health of the city's, um, utility system. You should've received some, a changed page, the definition of gross revenues, which is in this master bond resolution prior to the meeting. We made two changes since the agenda submission to this one resolution to the definition of gross revenues. One was to reflect, um, the, uh, financial feasibility process that was being undertaken by Burton and Associates. And so it was to bring the gross revenues definition in line with that feasibility report. And one was in response to a question that we received from a rating agency, uh, for some clarification about the gross revenues definition. Very minor, technical changes, but those are the only changes that occurred in any of the three resolutions which are before you tonight. And I wanted to point th- those out to you. Briefly, if it's appropriate, and I'll ask the city attorney, I can give you a, a quick description of the other two resolutions, which he will be reading by title only later, or I can go ahead and postpone that till, 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 till later, if you prefer.
I might as well do it now.
They're all interrelated. Two thousand thirteen dash oh seven, which the city attorney will read by title only shortly, works hand in glove with the master resolution we just talked about, two thirteen oh six. It supplements that master resolution and relates to your public offering. There are two pieces of debt which you're authorizing tonight, a publicly offered long-term indebtedness, and then a grant anticipation note. Right now, we're talking about the publicly offered long-term indebtedness. City is, um, city group is, um, appointed as your senior managing underwriter in, in this two thousand thirteen dash oh seven. It approves the form and authorizes execution of the basic documents that are necessary to implement the financing. Your preliminary official statement, which is the disclosure document, which goes out to the investors, um, uh, when the bonds, bonds are marketed. Your purchase contract, which will govern the transaction as between you and the underwriter once the bonds are marketed and until closing. And the continuing disclosure certificate, which will place upon the city customary continuing disclosure obligation after the bonds are marketed and sold and closed. It establishes various parameters with which the mayor will be able to enter into the final documentation and close the bond issue. We talked about the not to exceed principal amount of forty-five million, not to exceed thirty-year maturity, both consistent with the referendum, an underwriting discount, not to exceed point six percent of par, and a true interest cost rate not to exceed five point five oh percent. So, those are the parameters which govern finalization of the public offering. It establishes a reserve fund which further secures those bonds, and it permits the purchase of municipal bond insurance if that's financially advantageous to the city during the marketing process. So, that's a, a brief description of two thousand thirteen dash oh seven. The last resolution, which will be before you tonight, uh, the city attorney will read by title only shortly, is two thousand thirteen dash oh eight. This relates to the second piece of the financing, which is the grant anticipation note. The grant anticipation note is authorized to be issued in a not to exceed amount of eighteen million, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The Bank of America, who is selected as the lender. The security is a junior lien on the same revenues which are being pledged to the senior lien bonds, net revenues and impact fees, and pro-, grant proceeds with regard to a grant contract that has been entered into as between the city and Southwest Florida Water Management District. Those grant proceeds are the anticipated payback source, um, for the grant anticipation note. It is envisioned to be in place for a short period of time, unlike the long-term indebtedness we talked about previously, which will be in place for a longer period of time. The interest rate on the grant anticipation note will be a variable interest rate. So, that's a brief description of two thirteen dash oh eight. And so those are the three bond resolutions which are before you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it's covered a lot of information as you, um, have, that you may have now or as you go through the evening.
Any questions? Are there any, uh, public comments on the title? Standing here and chair will indicate a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is for resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh six.
Right.
Commissioner Tarr Penny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughtery.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. The next item is item number seventeen, resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero seven, supplement bond resolutions for the alternative water, uh, supply project in the Salem. Uh, discuss how this works with the other resolution we just, uh, passed. Uh, are there any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero seven, a resolution supplementing resolution two thousand thirteen oh six, adopted on the date hereof by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, providing for the issuance of not to exceed forty-five million dollars in utility system revenue bond series two thousand thirteen A for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding utility system revenue bond anticipation note series two thousand seven A, financing and/or reimbursing the cost of the design permitting acquisition and position and construction of well sites, pipelines, and a reverse osmosis water plant project, funding necessary reserves and paying costs related thereto, subject to the satisfaction of certain conditions contained herein and subject to the terms and conditions of a purchase contract, approving the form of the purchase contract, preliminary official statement and continuing, continuing disclosure certificate authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase contract, final official statement and continuing disclosure certificate, appointing a paying agent and a registrar, delegating to the mayor to award the sale of the bonds to underwriters named herein pursuant to, to a negotiated sale and subject to the conditions and terms set forth herein and in the purchase contract authorizing the city to opt to ensure all, a portion of none of the bonds with a policy of municipal bond insurance and/or to purchase a reserve fund insurance policy, whichever is in the best financial interest of the city, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith and providing an effective date. That's the reading of resolution two thirteen dash zero seven by title only.
Are there any, uh, public comments to the title? Chair will indicate a motion?
Motion for approval.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Did we get one?
Slaughtery did. Commissioner Tarr Penny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughtery.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number eighteen, resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero eight, grant anticipation note resolution for alternative water supply project.
Resolution number two thirteen dash zero eight, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a utility system grant anticipation note series two thousand thirteen of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to finance capital costs which are eligible for reimbursement under a Southwest Florida Water Management District grant for the reverse osmosis water plant project and to pay costs related thereto pledging grant proceeds on, re-, excuse me, pledging grant proceeds and on a junior and subordinate basis, certain net revenues and water and sewer capital facility fees of the utility system as described herein, providing that the note shall be limit, shall be a limited obligation of the city payable as provided herein, finding the necessity for a negotiated sale of the note and approving the sale of the note to Bank, Bank of America, North America, providing for the rights, securities, and remedies of the owner of the note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date. That's the reading of resolution two thirteen, uh, dash zero eight.
Are there any public comments on this item? Chair will indicate a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tarr Penny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughtery.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next we'll go to item number nineteen, resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero nine, application, uh, twelve dash sixty-five, Vercore LLC conditional application, use application for an arcade at three nine oh two eight U.S. Highway nineteen north in the highway business zoning district. Quayside Judicial.
This and the next item are quayside judicial. Um, I'm gonna explain to you the quayside judicial procedures that will be followed on this item and the next one. Uh, this is a quayside judicial proceeding where the commission acts in a quayside judicial rather than a legislative capacity. It is not the commission's function to make law, but to apply law that has already been established. The commission is required by law to make findings of fact based on the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues raised by the application. If that evidence demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There's a established procedure that will follow here. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at the hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will go first and present whatever testimony and evidence, uh, it wishes, and the applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony and witnesses, and city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witness. At that point, members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to speak. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public, uh, in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a, a closing argument or summary and, and present any, uh, rebuttal evidence, after which the city staff will have the same opportunity. Following this, the commission will consider the matter, and at that point, commissioners may ask questions of the witnesses. Um, following that emotion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this point, I would ask, uh, the commission to disclose any ex parte communications they may have had concerning this matter. I see there are none. Uh, anybody who intends to testify, which means up to that microphone, to say anything at this hearing or the next hearing, please raise your right hand and take the following up. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Um, Ms. Vincent.
Thank you, this is, excuse me, this is application twelve dash fifty-five from Ver-, Vercore LLC. The property location for this application is thirty-nine oh two eight U.S. Highway nineteen north. Uh, since this application is what's commonly known as an internet sweepstakes, um, uh, business, um, they, um, and, uh, provided that everyone was sitting down, a two-page handout that failed to get into the backup that is their business plan. Um, uh, under the Land Development Code, uh, this does require conditional use review. It falls under the category of an arcade or a game room, similar type of, of facility. Um, under the standards for review, um, there really, we did not find any issues with, um, performance of the requirements of the Land Development Code, compatibility, um, uh, consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, um, no impact on environmental or historical resources, and that the, uh, use will not negatively impact the zoning property values. Um, with respect to the use itself, I'm gonna let the applicant, uh, they did an excellent job at the planning and zoning board meeting explaining the operations and how this, uh, their proposed operation is in compliance with, um, Florida statutes. Um, and I'll also lean on the city attorney a little bit about, if you have questions regarding, uh, regarding that aspect of the application. Uh, the staff recommendation is to approve the application as it's presented. The planning and zoning board did review it at their last meeting and recommended approval by a vote of seven oh. And, um, you've been provided their, as by way of a handout this evening, their business plan, the seating plan, and then some maps and information regarding the location. Um, I will stop there and, uh, answer any questions you may have at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Does the applicant care to cross-examine, Ms. Vincent? All right, uh, does applicant care to make a presentation?
Good evening, uh, I'm here at Plantilla, three thirty, Appaloosa Road, Tarpon Springs. I'm here today with my partners, Nick Botzatis, Courtney Gross, and yours truly. Uh, we are here to request approval for a conditional use of arcade at three nine two oh eight U.S. nineteen, Tarpon Springs. The planning and zoning board voted unanimously to approve our application, and we ask for tonight to do the same, please. Uh, if you have any questions, I have the business cards up here. I can pass this on to you folks.
Is that something we already have?
Uh, yeah, yes, yes.
All right.
And I'm here also with my attorney, uh, Ms. Williams, uh, Miriam Lookinson. If you have any questions, please, feel free.
Okay, well, you just sacrificed that for the record, I hope that's okay. All right, uh, Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions with the applicant? All right, at this point, we'll go to public, uh, comment. Are there any members of the public, uh, who oppose the application? Okay, come up, uh, state your name and address for the record and, um, you've got four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Archie and Board of Commissioners. My name is Angel Sarah Solo. I'm a student of Public Policy and Administration at St. Pete College. My address is four nine six four Ninety-first Avenue North, Pinellas Park, uh, three three seven eight two. When I first reviewed the proposal- first reviewed the proposal, I was first inclined to support the resolution. However, after doing some research, I came across internet sweepstakes cafes that have been shut down because of riffraff and which caused additional crime in the neighborhood. I understand this business is being referred to as an arcade because that is the only legal way that they can set up their operation. It was the closest fitting label under planning and zoning. We all are aware that is internet sweepstake cafe, however, a place where people will spend money in hopes to win a contest, where for receiving money, a prize, or more sweepstake chances. The definition of sweepstakes is contest. This type of business has been able to operate under the safety net of advertising and selling internet time and telephone minutes and games. I also understand that these arcades fall under the Florida Statute Section eight or nine point oh nine four because they are categorized as game promotion or operators. These games resemble slot machines and other casino games. One Largo resident said that she spent at least sixty dollars a visit and wins nothing playing the games, which odds of winning are already predetermined. My research indicates that several internet cafes have been raided, prosecuted, and/or shut down by the authorities, who claim they are engaged in illegal gambling activities, not legitimate game promotions. They play simulated slot machine games in hopes of winning thousands of dollars, says a Cleveland gal. She said she won a hundred and sixty dollars on a twenty-two cent bet. That's gambling. She states lawmakers are trying to ban such cafes or impose hefty taxes. I am concerned that this sort of business will attract crime to a city with such charm as Tarpon. The reputation these sort of businesses have, do we really want to go along with that? Do we want to set that precedent and refuse this application? Is there a plan in place to monitor or regulate the business, for example, whether or not they are gambling or catering to minors? I recommend Tarpon deny this application or impose hefty taxes. Let's face it, Tarpon's not benefiting, neither are the residents, from this type of business being set up or operated. The only people benefiting from it will be the owners. Down the road, Tarpon residents will suffer from the criminal activity. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue, and I know the quasi stuff is opposition or for it. So I think this point. You're bound to approve this. Until the legislature does something concrete through some research and studies to determine how these places work and how to properly regulate them, you can't deny them. However, you can advise your citizens and warn them of a few things, and I was a little concerned when I looked at the packet up there because the public didn't see the business plan that you got on your desk. And in there, there's something that was lacking to be stated. Technically, from what they said in the business plan, you may want to look at it and ask them some stuff. Basically, they say anybody can go in and get sweepstake tickets. You don't have to make a purchase. I'd like to hear them educate our public how they can do that. First, that's what I would like to hear from them. Secondly, tell your citizens and the people who do go to these places, if they have issues where they feel they've been cheated or robbed or any of these other types of issues that people are concerned about, I'm sure Captain Cochin would be glad to give the non-emergency phone number that they could call and make reports. So there are ways you can try to help your citizens. And the lady made some valid concerns. I don't know about riffraff because, one, my picture of some of these places usually more elderly are taken advantage of because the younger people, they're not going to go pay for computer time. They got it on their phones. They got it on their iPads. They can go to the library. You know, you got to look at that, too. I mean, there's so much availability to internet access. But until that's regulated, that they're selling internet access, you know, there's nothing really you can do. But those would be my suggestions to the board to try to help the public in these types of issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Is there any other members of the public who might make a faster if you kind of lined up down here?
Mr. Delakis wasn't in opposition. I think he was for it, and I'm neither for nor against, but my question is, my name is Nancy Larson, by the way, sorry, I'm Twenty Reed Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. And I'd like to know what makes this business any different than the ones that they've already shut down in the county? And why, I guess this is to you, why would Tarpon, would Tarpon come in and shut it down, or would Tarpon stay out of it? How would that go down?
I'm going to rule that.
I can't do that.
No, you can't do that.
Well, that's a question that you might want to ask. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who opposes the application or is neutral on the issue? Who would make a presentation? All right. Is there anybody in support of the application? All right, seeing none. At this point, the applicant can make a closing statement or summary, or perhaps present rebuttal evidence.
Good evening. My name is Mark Cersei. I live at nine one nine nine Mississippi Run in Weykiwachi. I'm a real estate agent for Provincial Tropical, and I've represented Mr. Plantilla on several transactions. I've known him for over six years, and I know this gentleman to be of high moral fiber, and everything he does business-wise, his business ethics are second to none. I only deal with straight-up clients. He asked me in dealing with the City of Clearwater, when he opened his location, wanted to open a location at Beller Cove, to go to the City of Clearwater. And I approached the City of Clearwater on his behalf, completely transparent, wide open, city manager, city attorney Pam Akin, the city, the mayor, George Kretikus, the chief of police, and opened his plan and said, what would you like to know about him? He's wanting to meet with you. His staff is wanting to meet with you. And they vetted him. They took police background checks, and they took up at a city council work session, discussed it, and they said, we're okay with it. And they voted, and he got approved. He has a business license. He opens his doors. Two weeks later, court enforcement walked in the door just to check him out, just to make sure he was doing everything he said he was going to do. And they called me personally and said, this gentleman, not only is he doing a good job, we would like to personally recommend he open a couple more on the beach in Clearwater. And that, so if you have a little history of what's going on down in Clearwater, he does what he says and says what he does. Very sharp about that. He asked me to approach you, and I started with Ray Vincent and your planning and zoning. I went to meet with your city manager, offered to meet with the chief of police and the city attorney. Very transparent, very open to you, and I certainly hope you look this gentleman in the eye and give him your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you have any other comments?
Just on the staff recommendation, just I want to get this into the record for the public, the wording on the staff recommendation. The approval of the conditional uses is based solely on information submitted by the applicant that is relevant to the criteria for evaluating conditional uses set forth in the Conference of Zoning and Land Development Code and does not constitute affirmation or approval or an opinion whether any aspect of the present or future mode of operation of the business violates Chapter eight forty-nine Florida statutes or any other provision of the Florida statutes. The business must operate in compliance with Chapter eight forty-nine Florida statutes. Thank you.
Fairness appropriate for commission consideration at this point.
Thank you. The first thing is that I'm glad Ms. Vincent talked about what the recommendation is for the city is concerned for its style. The next thing is that she had alluded to the fact that somebody was going to talk about why this business complies with Florida State Statute eight forty-nine, and I haven't heard that yet. So that would be my first question to you as to tell us why you feel like it complies with that. And then after that, I'd like for the attorney to talk in terms of, again, to everyone, what a quasi judicial process is and what we are supposed to be doing sitting up here just now.
My name is Miriam Wilkinson. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Matheson Mercy, sixteen forty-five Metropolitan Boulevard, Tallahassee, three two three oh eight. I appeared at the planning and zoning meeting last week. I am the former game promotions program attorney for the state of Florida, responsible for the regulation and enforcement of all game promotions throughout the state. I am also the former assistant director of the Division of Consumer Services at the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and was responsible for policymaking related to sweepstakes in the state of Florida. Let me tell you how these came about. These did not sneak into Florida overnight, under cover of darkness, through a loophole in the law. In two thousand and six, we were approached by a senator who had a constituent interested in opening a business selling consumer products and services and offering a video sweepstakes in order to promote foot traffic into the business. When we looked at these, we had probably the same initial reaction that, you know, some law enforcement have had when looking at the images on the display because they resemble a slot machine. But we had two attorneys in the department spend six months researching this particular business model in the context of Florida gambling law, Chapter eight forty-nine, as well as slot machine definition under eight forty-nine point fifteen, and the Florida game promotion statute, eight forty-nine point zero nine four. At that time, we came to the conclusion that, in fact, this particular business model fell within the game promotion statute. At the time, this was Commissioner Bronson was the ad commissioner. General McCollum was the attorney general. Before Commissioner Bronson would sanction, approve of this particular business model, he insisted that we discuss it with the attorney general. And in fact, we sent all the materials to the attorney general's office. There were three attorneys in that office who reviewed it, and in fact, came to the conclusion, the same conclusion, that this particular type of sweepstakes appeared to be a game promotion under eight forty-nine oh nine four, and that we were, the Department of Agriculture, because we are responsible for the regulation enforcement of sweepstakes, were the subject matter experts. I have, and I pointed this out in the planning and zoning meeting, I have the original December two thousand and six memo confirming the discussions with the attorney general, that these, this particular type of sweepstakes is not unlawful. The game promotion statute was passed in nineteen seventy-one, prior to home computers. You know, I had a record player back in nineteen seventy-one, and nobody had ever heard of a tape back then, or a cassette, or a CD, or a DVD. And the problem is, is that technology has changed, and the law is a nineteen seventy-one law and hasn't kept up with the technology. But the department, when I left the department, which was in January of two thousand and eleven, was, we were accepting, almost everyone, I think pretty much everyone, who filed game promotions in Florida, and we're talking thousands and thousands of them annually, you know, they're all electronic now. They all basically work the same way, where you have a preconfigured, finite, fixed pool of prizes that are all predetermined. And those prizes, when you have an entry, now, when you go to a fast food place and they're running a sweepstakes, you get an alphanumeric coded entry that's on your food container or your drink cup. And they tell you to go home and log into www dot whatever dot com and, you know, get on the site, and you can have your entry electronically revealed. And you can do it from your smartphone or from your home computer or wherever. Now, these are no different. The prizes, the prize pool is preconfigured. As people redeem their prizes and reveal them, and then redeem them, the pool is depleted, so that eventually the pool will be zero. And that is part of the law, that you have to award all prizes offered. And I know that prior to Lieutenant Governor Carroll becoming a lieutenant governor, she contacted me when I was with the department, and she was going to file legislation to put language in codifying the legality of, you know, to update the statute to include electronic reveal sweepstakes. So I understood, we understood in two thousand and six that this was going to eventually be a controversial issue, for no reason other than the display and the way that they look. But they are entirely lawful at this point in time. You know, I know that the gaming, the Senate Gaming Committee, I was sitting in the meeting yesterday, they, of course, are looking at these as well as all types of gambling in the state of Florida, and, you know, they say they're going to do something, you know, by, I guess, next year. So, and this type of, they will include the Game Promotions Act within whatever they do. So if you have any questions, any more questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I don't have any more questions. Glad to get your name.
My name is Miriam, M-I-R-I-A-M, Wilkinson, W-I-L-K-I-N-S-O-N.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing is, if the attorney could just talk in terms of this being quasi judicial and what we're charged with as a body in terms of how should we make a decision, and what we're making that decision on. Now, whether we like this business or is strength for Tarpon and all the rest of that, but what are the parameters that we are charged to look at in terms of making a decision?
Be glad to. I start all these meetings by saying it's not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. What that means is that the commission in a legislative capacity has adopted a zoning code that, you know, provides for review of uses, conditional uses, and has adopted criteria when it's sat in a legislative capacity for the grant or denial of those. The commission sits in a different function here. It's a quasi judge, quasi fact finder, and its role- finder, and its role simply is to hear the evidence presented at this hearing, the evidence at this hearing, uh, determine whether that is competent substantial and relevant evidence, um, and based upon that evidence, determine whether the applicant has met the criteria or has not met the criteria. This is not, this is not, their function here is not to sit here and say, geez, I, I think we should not have those types of uses, they've already determined in their legislative capacity that, uh, what uses will be permitted, and the sole issue here is whether this use meets the criteria. And those criteria are whether, in the case of a conditional use, whether, um, the use conforms to the requirements of the Land Development Code, whether the use to which the property may be put is appropriate to the property in question, and is compatible with existing and planned uses in the area, whether the conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of all elements of the city comprehensive plan, whether the conditional use, uh, will result in any significant adverse impacts to the environmental or historical resources of the city, uh, whether the conditional use will adversely affect adjoining property values, and whether the conditional use will adversely impact or exceed the capacity of the city to provide appropriate, um, public facilities, such as water and sewer, and things like that. So, um, you know, the question is, for this board, is whether the evidence presented at this hearing has demonstrated that the applicant has met those criteria. If they have, if, uh, the evidence at this hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met those criteria, then the commission is required by law, at the risk of being sued, I suppose, to find in favor of the applicant. Conversely, if they're not convinced that there's evidence to support these criteria, the commission is required to find, uh, against the applicant. Let me, let me just state, if I might. It's important to note that the, uh, the resolution before the board has language, um, has language that Ms. Benson read, uh, which simply states that, um, that the approval of the conditional use, um, is solely, is based solely upon information submitted by the applicant that is relevant to, uh, the criteria for evaluating conditional uses, and that in no way should the grant of this conditional use constitute an affirmation or approval or opinion whether any aspect of the present or future mode of operation of the business violates Chapter eight forty-nine Florida statutes. The, uh, and the reason that's in there is some jurisdiction and authorities have taken the position, um, that some of the activities, uh, in some internet cafes violate, uh, the gambling laws, and I know the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office has taken this position. However, as you've heard, the legislature hasn't really spoken on that, uh, and there have been no judicial decisions, uh, you know, addressing the issue. Some jurisdictions have, Clearwater, have taken the position it, it is legal. The city at this point has no legal basis to conclude, or at least the city attorney's office has no legal basis to conclude, that the applicant's mode of operation constitutes gambling. Um, the decision to make an arrest and, uh, bring a prosecution in any jurisdiction is a discretionary one, depending upon particular facts, uh, the arresting and prosecuting agency's interpretation of the law, uh, the resources of the arresting and prosecuting authority, and, uh, I guess to some extent, the perceived evil, uh, that the wrong, uh, creates. Um, so, on my advice, we put that language in, uh, in order to prevent the applicant from taking the position some later date, should it become clear that, uh, you know, this is or is not gambling, or this is gambling, uh, in order to prevent the applicant from taking the position that the city has determined by granting, uh, the conditional use that the operation is legal.
Okay. That, that definitely, uh, helps, and all I ask is if Ms. Benson, I think she's there, uh, just, uh, again, um, tell us whether you think that this meets the standards that we've set forth as far as the city for its conditional use?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. Uh, and I, I, I say that for everybody to understand this, this is not a, a time of what our opinion is, how we feel about this business, or any other business. When we're talking about quasi judicial, then we're talking about, we are supposed to be acting as the judge here, not coming in and saying, I don't like this, I don't like that, and making a decision based upon popular opinion, everybody stand up who want it, everybody sit down, whoever gets the most votes wins. Uh, that's not this type of procedure. So that's just to help everybody understand where we're at, or where I'm at, as far as the body, and I believe my colleagues are. Uh, are there any questions, does anyone have, uh, Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. Uh, my question would be for either the chief, uh, or the city attorney, just to elaborate, as I was going through the backup on page, um, three, from the technical review committee meeting, um, the police department's review comments, it says below, and then it says, "The police department will consult with city attorney and Pinellas County Sheriff's Office." Um, so my question, I guess, would be to you, chief, what, what was found when you discussed this with the city attorney and the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office?
Well, you have to understand, obviously, y'all know you're here for a comprehensive zoning and land development use. If we get involved in this situation, the proper venue will be in a criminal court, not here. Um, we are a part of a unit that has made cases in the county before on some internet cafes, and it would be very difficult for me to give you any kind of opinion without saying more. So with that said, we consulted with the city attorney, and in all fairness to the applicant, we worked with the city attorney to give information that would be appropriate for this venue, and that you're approving conditional use. Obviously, if the conditional use has language in it, that it must comply with Chapter eight forty-nine, and that hasn't been determined yet.
Thank you. My other question.
Commissioner Larson? Thank you. I do have some concerns regarding this application, but I also understand that we're very limited in what we can and cannot consider as we look at it. Um, I, I wanted to kind of follow up on what Commissioner Tarpani was asking about, uh, particularly in regards to the interaction with, uh, the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, as, I guess we all know from newspaper articles and so forth, they've gone in and shut down some of these, uh, similar, or perceived to be similar uses. Um, when you look at the standards for review, um, number six says the conditional use will not adversely impact nor exceed the capacity or the fiscal ability of the city to provide, and then list various services. So, keeping that, uh, standard for review in mind, um, Chief Coach, and what, what is the plan in place to, to monitor, uh, the business to determine that it doesn't fall into the category of gambling, and will that plan be, um, a, a big deal for the, for our police department? Is, is it something that's going to be, uh, a challenge for us to provide the services that we need, uh, to the entire city while still keeping an eye on this particular use?
Well, obviously, we have our patrol division, um, likely we check any other business, and, um, some other stuff about intelligence that I can't discuss publicly. I mean, I wish I could help you out more, but I'm trying to delimit what I say.
No, I, I appreciate that, I, that, that certainly makes sense to me, but I, I just wanna make sure, as, as we look at the standards for review, are we in a situation where this conditional use would adversely impact the city's ability to provide services, including police?
I would defer that to the attorney. Like I said, a pro, a patrol division, like any other business, um, do conduct patrols, area checks, to respond to complaints, um, that would be like any other normal business. Um, the other side of the equation is, is a little more complicated.
Okay. Um, I, I also had a question for the applicant. Um, the business plan that was passed around did mention that there's no purchase necessary to win, uh, and also went on to mention that a purchase does not increase the odds of winning. I'm wondering if you could expand a little bit on that. Uh, I mean, it was my impression that the contest was kind of a motivator to get people to come in and make purchases, but apparently no purchase is necessary to win. So I'm wondering if you could expand on how a resident could come in and attempt to win without making a purchase?
I can answer that for you. Um, a game promotion under Florida law is a contest or game of chance or gift enterprise conducted in conjunction with the sale of a consumer product or service, in which the elements of chance and prize are present. Gambling is, has three elements: chance, prize, and consideration, under Florida law. That means you pay money for the chance to win a prize. When you play a slot machine, you are putting money into the machine for a chance to win a prize. With a sweepstakes, you cannot charge money for people to enter. You can't charge money for those chances. You can't sell entries. That's why all sweepstakes must say, "No purchase necessary," and they must provide an alternative means of entry other than the purchase of a product or a service.
Thank you. Could, could you expand a little bit on, on what is the alternative means of entry? I mean, if I wanna walk in, and if I wanna play, but I don't wanna pay, what, what is the procedure? I walk in the door and...
You can ask for free entries. I want free entries. And they give them to you. Most, when you, when you go to, when you enter any sweepstakes, I don't care if it's Chili's, or you go to Publix, or Coke Rewards, you, there's always an alternative method of entry. Historically, it's been send a self-addressed stamped envelope to X address, and you can get, they'll send an entry back to you.
In this case, they could just come in and sit down at a computer and play for free?
Well, you don't play anything, actually. I mean, the, the prizes are already predetermined, so when you get those entries, you've either, you've either won a prize or you haven't. It doesn't matter whether you sit down and play those games or not. The games have, are, are not related. You can sit at that, that computer, and you can play video games for two minutes, two days, two hours, two months. If you get a hundred free entries, if you, all entries are free, but you walk in and you get a hundred free entries, and you decide that, you can ask the cashier, "Tell me if I won anything." Uh, alternatively, in most of these places, you can sit down and pull up an Excel spreadsheet, um, you know, with your entry alphanumeric codes, and then out beside it whether or not there's a prize associated with that. And so if, if, if entry number five is worth ten dollars, and entry number ninety-nine is worth ten dollars, you've won fifteen dollars before you ever do anything. When the cashier hands you your, your, gives you your entries, it's over. You've already won. It's over. People don't know that. The games are a facade. It was, it's a very clever marketing scheme. And, um, the software, um, this particular software has been evaluated by a third, an objective, third-party company, who in fact, um, certifies the slot machines in Broward County, and they also certify sweepstakes software, um, and they have, they have their certification that this operates like a sweepstakes. It does not operate like a slot machine. So, um, the entries, you walk in, they give you your entries for free, you don't have to buy anything. And whether you choose to play a video game to incrementally reveal those entries is up to you. But you can just ask the cashier if you've won anything, and walk back out and take your money.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I wanted to direct my question to, uh, City Attorney Mr. Yakovon and Mr. Coachen, uh, the chief boys. Uh, obviously, based on information we received, that, uh, this application meets the criteria, but one of the speakers said earlier that she was concerned that is increasing the, uh, is, is increasing crime. One of our responsibilities is safety and welfare of the people throughout our springs. Do we have any data supporting that, that the crime has, will increase?
I don't have any specific data supporting that.
And let me just inject, the way to address that would be, um, uh, by bringing a nuisance action, or some other, uh, action independent. Some action if it turns out that, uh, they're not, they're conducting their business in a way that it starts causing police problems and nuisances, then the city would have, uh, some civil remedies, and possibly criminal remedies that way.
So there's no data available to us to, uh, to evaluate that?
No.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's any other questions, but, you know, along that lines is that it's, it's, to me, it's like, um, a place wants to sell alcohol, and the odds of people drinking might get into fights. You can't just arbitrarily say that you can't have a license because the, the likelihood of you, of somebody getting intoxicated might, uh, turn into something criminal. So, uh, there's a lot of other things that's out there, but, um, what's on our purview right now is whether we're gonna accept this or not, and if there are no other questions, shall we entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor LaVusa?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The next item we have is item number twenty, Resolution twenty thirteen, dash zero one, Application eleven, dash sixty, Valerius Partners, uh, conditional use application for retail kiosks at, uh, five ninety, the Decanese Boulevard, in the, um, SDB Marine Tourist Zoning District, quasi judicial.
All right, Resolution twenty thirteen, dash zero one, a resolution, the city is arbitrarily exploring approving the application eleven, dash sixty, for six retail kiosks for a property located at five ninety, the Decanese Boulevard, providing for findings and providing, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Um, let me interject here, is that, uh, at the planning and zoning level, uh, Ms. Coburn representing several property owners, uh, requested to be recognized as an intervener. The planning and zoning board has a, a process of recognizing an intervener. Uh, the Board of Commissioners have not adopted that process. With your approval, I'd like to, uh, um, grant her, uh, the opportunity at, um, at, in the public comment portion of the meeting, uh, to present witnesses and, uh, to make an argument, um, you know, on the basis that she represents, uh, some property owners, uh, in the area. Is that acceptable?
Uh, it's acceptable to me with this condition, is that we don't prolong things, we're not gonna get into, um, most attorneys, maybe not you, Ms. Coburn, get paid by the hour along the way here. Uh, I don't get paid by the hour, so I, I like to have it where if, if the rest of the body concurs, you bring witnesses, they say we're not gonna get into back and forth rebuttals, and all the rest of that, it, that's okay. Because we don't have a process for that.
All right, and I'm gonna ask, uh, I'm gonna ask that all, um, all people who speak here, first, the public is limited to four minutes, I'm, I'm gonna ask that everybody try to be directing concise, and, uh, try to keep their presentations under ten minutes, um, and also with the understanding that any witness she calls to testify, uh, uh, waves their right to speak at the public, just get up again and speak as a public commentator. That way we can move toward expeditiousism.
To be honest, Mr. Yakovon, I was not prepared to have this great opportunity that you've afforded me, so I prepared ten minutes. I have people that have yielded time, and there are people that want to individually speak, so if, if I'm not, you know, I would like more opportunity to, to go through the packet that I've given you, and if, if that's acceptable to the, to the board, where I give just a little bit more time, so that I can...
If you can do it in ten minutes, uh, thereabout, to make everybody happy.
Okay, um...
Wait, well, not yet.
I bet I have something to, to say, and, um, it might be the appropriate time, and you need to let me know this. Um, I have a motion to recuse one of the commissioners, and so I, I'd like to know at what point we do that.
Well, let me ask, uh, let me, I haven't done my next thing. Uh, I already read the, uh, resolution, the same quasi judicial procedures. Are there, uh, any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
No more than some of the residents have, uh, business zones called, you know.
Mr. Yakovon, I also received a phone call from one of the owners.
Okay. All right, um...
I'm sorry, Ms., I, Ms., I also met with the Blairs and discussed the, the project.
All right. Um, and the recusal motion is...
Okay, um, the recusal motion is directed to Ms. Slattery. Um, I know Ms. Slattery, she's a nice lady, and, uh, she has, she's a close friend with Ms. Blairs, and, um, I, well, she, she... Um, I know Ms. Slattery, she's a nice lady, and, uh, she had, she's a close friend with Ms. Belairis. And, um, well, she, she apparently is a, is a, a close friend because during the, uh, planning and zoning meeting, several witnesses saw Ms. Belairis approach her during the meeting, whereupon then she came back and spoke to Mr. Yakavon. And then, right after that, Mr. Frenzy was recused.
Is that the, is that the basis of your motion?
Yes.
All right. Well, then, uh, to the extent, I'm not making a ruling. I'm just telling that the law is she is obligated to vote unless she has a conflict of interest. And those conflicts of interest are defined in the Florida statutes. And I will tell you that mere friendship with an applicant is not a, a conflict of interest.
I understand. But a clear bias toward a particular applicant's position is. And the statutes that I cite to you are the ones I'm sure you'll well know, um, which would be one-one-two-point-three-one-one, one-one-two-three-one-four-three, and, um, the one that, uh, talks about clear conflict of interest, or, uh, the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Okay. I'm, I'm just telling you that friendship is not a conflict.
I understand. Friendship is not, but bias is. Bias is the basis. Um, so...
Well, I, I'm, what I'm telling you, she is legally obligated to vote here unless you can come up with something that constitutes a conflict of interest.
A bias, prejudice, interest, or matters which rest in large measure with the knowledge and conscience of the public official. In any situation when an official has reason to believe, feel that they may be in a position which handicaps them in serving impartially and fairly, obviously, he should take appropriate action to remove himself from authority. So, at this time, I would ask Ms. Slattery whether or not she feels that she can fairly, uh...
What are you reading from?
This is, I apologize, I should have brought it to you. This is a code of, uh, the, the Commission on...
Oh, okay. All right. Do you know that one? Do you feel that you have such a bias?
I will make my decision based on competent, substantial, and relevant evidence that is presented here this evening. I will not recuse my vote.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh...
Wait a minute, Mr. Yakavon, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, I, I do want to submit the affidavits into the record. I have the original affidavits here. So, if you will receive them into the record. These are Gloria Prusik, Naomi Quesos, and Katie Karastina.
No. Uh, all witnesses have been sworn, I'm assuming. Uh, um, so staff, essential?
Thank you. This is application eleven dash sixty for Belairis Partners. The property location is Five-Ninety Deccanese Boulevard. Um, trying to decide how I want to present this since this application is originally changed from, or changed since its original submission. Um, just by way of background, the original application was for twenty-one kiosks to be placed on the property with the landscaping easement, you know, the buffer planting, uh, and with a phased plan over seven years. That plan was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board on December seventeenth, and at that meeting, Planning and Zoning Board recommended to deny the application by a vote of four-one. Subsequently, the applicant met with staff and has significantly amended the application, reducing the application down to a total of six kiosks, again, fronting on the, the front property line with the plant easement, uh, planning and pedestrian easement to the benefit of the city. Um, and, and they are asking for a three-year timeframe to complete the project. That's the context that I'm going to go through the rest of the review criteria under. Um, this property is located within the city's, um, special area plan, specifically the SDB Marine Tourist Zoning District within the SMART Code. Um, as such, kiosks are identified in the SMART Code as a conditional use, which is what brings it here for you today. Um, the, um, when the applicant first approached the city regarding the interest to do this particular project, um, we, meaning the city, you know, uh, discussed, we were, we're in the middle of the Sponge Dock Improvement Plan, and we had, uh, plans at that point that showed how parking lots could be buffered with just exactly this type of use, with, with kiosks interspersed with landscaping to break up some of the expanses of parking lots. So, at that point in time, I'm giving you some context as to how the easement issue came about. The city has a tree planting program. And so, we, you know, we offer this to any property owner, um, whether they're putting a business on the property or whether they just want to improve their parking lot, that if they give us an easement, the city will participate with Tree Bank money to go toward purchase of trees to beautify the, the parking lots. Um, so, and that's throughout the city, frankly. It's not just the Sponge Docks. So, that's the genesis of the easement. Um, under our standards for review, um, conformance with the requirements of land development code, i.e. the SMART Code in this instance. Um, as I said, this is a conditional use in the SDB Zoning District. Establishment of six kiosks, as shown on the conceptual plan, um, uh, we feel is compatible, you know, with the nature of the docks. It's a very eclectic area. Um, there are pictures in the backup that do show, you know, kiosks throughout the Sponge Docks area. Some of them have been permitted, and some of them have not. Um, but they exist, and various things are, operations take place in the kiosk. Um, the applicant has provided a brochure of the types of kiosks that they want to be able to put on the property. Um, and the conditional, the condition of approval is that, that those are the types of kiosks, whether those are the exact ones, they have to be basically substantially similar in nature, cannot exceed ten, ten by ten in size. They will have to comport with, with the building code. Um, they're not exempt from the building code, and that is enforced at the time of permitting. Um, so, we find that, well, the conformance with the requirements of land development code, we feel it's, is clearly in conformance with the land development code. The uses, uh, the, the use to which the property may be put is appropriate to the property in question and compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. As I stated earlier, you have a very wide range of uses. There are existing kiosks, there are brick-and-mortar stores, um, there are pop-up tents, there's any manner of things happening down at the docks. Um, so far as planned uses in the area, one of the things that, you know, we've routinely heard from folks, "We want to beautify the area, things need to look better." Um, you know, "The parking lots need to be improved." This is a way to do that. This is a, you know, it's a transitional use that brings business to the docks and, and allows two things. One, it allows businesses to be established, but it also allows, you know, upstart businesses to find a place and find a market. If they didn't, maybe later on, they may come in and go ahead and go to a full retail store because they have a following. Um, the, um, so, you know, applicants, you know, we feel that their request is consistent with the redevelopment goals, the Sponge Dock Special Area Plan, and the Conferencing Plan. And, and certainly, it's consistent with existing uses there. Uh, the conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies and elements of the Conferencing Plan. I've already stated, we find, we reckon, uh, find that it is. There's nothing, you know, the Sponge Docks Character District, um, is, under our Special Area Plan, which is part of the Conferencing Plan, primarily comprised of tourist-oriented, commercial business restaurants and industrial waterfront uses. As I said, it's a wide range of uses. Character District will continue to support the working waterfront and tourist trade while increasing the number of actual residents to the area in order to improve overall neighborhood stability and support local businesses. Um, so, you know, the Special Area Plan was really an attempt to create an environment to encourage business. Um, the conditional use will not result in adverse impacts to environmental or historical resources. We don't find that there will be any impacts on the envi, on the environment or historical resources. Um, the conditional use will not adversely affect adjoining property values. Um, at a minimum, we think it would have, you know, a, a, no impact as, you know, at the best, we think it would have a very positive impact. Anytime a property owner is willing to put money into their property and establish businesses, you know, is, is they, is going to raise property values. Conditional use will not adversely impact or exceed the capacity or the fiscal ability of the city to provide adequate public facilities and put in transportation, water, storage, solid waste, drainage, recreation, education, fire protection, library service, and other similar public facilities. What this statement is asking is, should we allow this to ha, this, this use to go on the property? Is it going to somehow affect the ability of the city to provide those services? The answer is no. It doesn't, it has nothing to do with the requirement to provide bathrooms. It has nothing to do, it, it basically, if they put that on there, are we somehow going to adversely affect transportation? You know, the city's wastewater treatment plant, or the pipes under the ground, things of that nature. And the findings on that are no. And will the conditional use provide for efficient orderly development considering impacts on growth patterns and the cost of the city to provide public facilities? Again, we find that this would be a positive impact on growth patterns. This is an infill area. The right, you know, impacts on growth patterns really speaks to going out in the middle of the field and establishing things where there's never been business before. This is an infill area, we encourage the development and redevelopment, and we find that that would have a positive impact on growth patterns for the city. Uh, as I stated, under the proposed amendment, the, uh, the applicant is requesting the six, uh, kiosks along the road frontage, uh, three years to implement the project, and that the structures will substantially conform to those that are shown in the attachment to the resolution. Um, this did go back to the Planning and Zoning Board, excuse me, on January twenty-eighth. And there was a lot of similar discussions, um, that, uh, the first hearing, although I think it was a little more measured in how definitions were interpreted and, you know, what the appropriate competent substantial evidence is in the matter. Ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval by a vote of six-oh on the revised proposal. Um, the staff recommendation, uh, and, and we do feel that, you know, those, those uses, they still allow the parking lots to function, uh, but putting the kiosk along the street frontage, and I'm not talking about just this particular application. They have expanses of parking. You know, these are good ways to buffer and screen those, those uses while allowing the parking to happen and allowing business, you know, and, and attracting people to come to the docks. And would, you know, improves the pedestrian experience. You know, as a pedestrian in an urban area, you know, when you're walking down, and all of a su, down the street, and all of a sudden, you see huge parking lots to the right and huge parking lots to the left, it breaks your interest. And you might just turn around and go back the other way. And we hear that from people. And this is one way to continue that interest and keep people moving up and down the docks. Um, so, for the record, I want to read the staff recommendation, the recommended conditions of approval that are in the resolution. Um, under the conditions of approval, all structures must be prefabricated or professionally designed. No pop-up solid tents will be allowed. Structures must be substantially similar to those identified in Attachment A with necessary modifications to allow for, like, a lock stories underneath. Number two, the approval is limited to six structures to be placed within the area identified on the conceptual plan, which is Attachment B of the resolution. Number three, all site improvements shall be completed by March thirty-first, twenty sixteen, or the conditional use may be revoked for non-compliance. Number four, all landscaping must be irrigated. Number five, the applicant must grant the city a ten-foot landscaping and pedestrian easement along the front property line within thirty days of approval of the conditional use. Number six, all other temporary structures and tents on the property will be removed except for the existing permitted structure for the eucalyptus oil sale, which is a chaos. The struc, that structure will count as one of the permitted six structures and will be aligned with the prop, with the proposed new structures on the road frontage. With that, I'll stop at a appropriate time and answer any questions from the Board or the public. Thank you.
Vincent, would you tell us, uh, what your qualifications are as a planner?
Uh, I received my master's degree in urban regional planning in December of nineteen ninety-five, and I have, uh, eighteen years of professional planning experience thus far. Thank you.
And are you a member of any professional planning organizations?
I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and, and Amer, and the American Planning Association.
And what role did you have in bringing forward, uh, the SMART Code for adoption by the city?
Uh, that was a long process that was initiated by the Planning Division. Um, we were, you know, myself and that planner were integral in the development of the SMART Code, um, from, from soup to nuts. So, I have a vast amount of experience with that code.
And did you take any courses to educate yourself on the SMART Code?
I have been through the basic SMART Code workshop as well as the advanced SMART Code workshop, which deals with implementation of the SMART Code, yes.
All right, thank you. Um, does the applicant care to cross-examine, Ms. Vincent? Okay. Time for you to make your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Beverly Belairis, ten-twenty-eight Conins Law Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Um, for a point I would like to make before I get going on, uh, my presentation, I do know Commissioner Slattery on a professional level. Um, I don't believe I've ever, and I can almost say never, have called Commissioner Slattery. We do not see each other socially. Uh, so, I address her when I speak to her as a Commissioner and as a resident who had a concern. And I only speak to her as a Commissioner and with due respect to anyone else that sits on this Board, who I have served with many of you. So, um, that's all the amount of conflict there is in, in that area. There is no conflict of interest. I'm quite sure she can make a very wise judgment. Um, thank you for hearing our case this evening. Um, as Ms. Vincent eloquently put, that, you know, based on the SMART Code, which I've al, also had training in, talks about diversity and how to get pedestrians, traffic moving in an area of the Sponge Docks. The Belairis family, my husband owns, uh, the parking lot down on Deccanese. It definitely needs improvement. And I don't think you do need to be a rocket scientist to go down, drive by the parking lot, and say there needs to be change. That's why I'm here today. Um, Mr. Belairis has talked to Ms. Vincent long ago, I, I want to say almost two years ago, a year and a half ago, with an idea, with a beautification that was being processed or thought about within the city for the Sponge Docks. They started talking about different ideas how we can improve the parking lot. Um, and basically, that's how the idea was born. Um, we want to bring some diversity to the Sponge Docks. The kiosk sale is not a flea market. A flea market is where someone comes in on a weekly or daily basis, sells their goods, packs them up, and goes home. Uh, there'll be no tents. Um, by our own right, uh, permitted right, in the SMART Code, they do allow for flea markets, which would allow for a canopy for the stretch of the front of the parking lot. Car can pull up with a table, put their wares out and sell it. That is a flea market. We are not wanting to have that type of atmosphere down there. The original plan we brought forward, you know, was twenty or twenty-one kiosk when we went before the P and Z. Um, and it was over a seven-year plan. And they had difficulty thinking about such a long time to do this. So, we stepped back and said, "Okay, let's do six. Let's do this in steps," which would mean that I would have to come before this Board and the P and Z anytime I wanted to add to our plan. So, uh, we were happy to try six. I would love to see it on other parking lots besides ours. There have been, at the P and Z, concerns of, you know, um, whether we have bathrooms on the parking lot for the six vendors that will be there. We do not overload the capacity of the bathrooms, city bathrooms, that gee, we just spent a, I'm sure this is a low-ball number, a hundred, at least a hundred fifty thousand dollars for city bathrooms down at the Sponge Docks, plus we have the City Marina, plus you have the, in the sponge exchange, I believe the rent there is seventy-five-hundred dollars a year, or something like that. Um, I don't believe that will, six vendors will overload that capacity in any way. The vendors there, quite frankly, will probably have lunch, and you patronize the restaurants. The goal is to bring, as I said, diversity. The vendors that we are looking at bringing in, hopefully will have a following, people will come, follow with their business, and give more traffic. It's not going to be the only items they're going to look at at the sponge docks, they're going to walk around our whole community. That's the goal, to bring more traffic to the area. Let's see, hang on here. The property already has, I'm just going to touch on this in case it's brought up as a question, the property already has water and electricity on the property if needed, so those uses are there. I think I'm not going to get into too much detail, I think I'll probably answer some of your questions as we go on, but I do want to emphasize that this is not a flea market venue, and that our tenants will be signing an annual lease, so that they are someone that will have property, will be there all year round. I do want to touch, oh, I forgot, one other thing I want to touch on is that the pamphlet that you have of the kiosk, that is to show you the shape and size and the roofing, but it will, we have a kiosk down there now, that the, it comes up with wood walls, so it actually closes at night, and they can lock it in, it's not all open all the way around. I did not want to mislead you in that it was no closing area. At night, they would lock their stuff inside, and we have an existing one down there right now. And we have been trying to follow the rules all the way through this process, and that was our goal, not to violate any code, and we will follow all building codes that are required for this plan and work with the city. Do you and I have any questions? I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coburn, would you like to share to make your presentation? Are you here? Oh, there he is.
First of all, I want to say that Ms. Slattery wasn't intended in a personal way.
Yes.
Yes, I can, I'm sorry, the court reporter has trouble hearing me. First of all, just very briefly on the issue of easements, I don't have a problem with trees to the Belairs', or anybody else on the, on the street down there, because I think it's a great idea to give a shade and get trees down there, and if the city, you as a group decide that that's an appropriate thing to do, I think that's a great idea, to get, to get the shade and the trees down there. The only problem I have is that this easement is an appropriate way to do it, because it's not a legal easement. And I have a memorandum of law that I prepared for Mr. Yakavone with case law, I'm giving all of you a copy of it without the case law, because you don't need it. But essentially, it's an unenforceable illusory agreement, I don't recommend the city do anything with it at all. If you decide that you want to pay for the trees, I think that's great, and I think it should be available to other people that have large, unattractive parking lots in a way to try to help them out. So I'm going to provide this now and put that in the record. Now, if you had a chance to read my letter to all of you in the backup, basically, my concern is that, you understand, this isn't just one applicant here, this has pretty big ramifications for the city. If you looked at the information that I provided you, the map, the SMART code, this is a conditional use in almost every area in the SMART code, wherever the SMART code applies. And it goes from Tarpon Avenue at Levi all the way down to the Bayou, it's on South Canellus Avenue from Sweet Bay all the way down to Captain Jack's. That's a very large area, and there's a lot of parking lots. And even though it's a conditional use, it's still, you're setting a standard here for conditional use, and someone with a similar fact situation is going to want to get some kiosks. So if you're going to give six here, what's the criteria for giving the six? How many can a lot get? What is, how are we going to govern these? This is not known, because there's no specific ordinance that addresses it. The SMART code is a very comprehensive legislation. Every time something like that's done, sometimes small things get overlooked, it happens, that's just the nature of it. And that's why we have ordinances and we pass laws to fill in these gaps, and there's a gap here. So what I'm asking for you to do is not to open the barn and let the animals out and then close the door. We have three that Mr. and Mrs. Belairs have now. If I, if you look through the documents that I provided you, I took photographs of every single kiosk that's on the sponge docks, that's what they look like. For the most part, most applicants, property owners have one per property, that's the general rule. Now, there is no law that applies to these, but the fact of it is, because the city's allowed the people to have a kiosk. So these kiosks are tied mostly to brick and mortar businesses, they have bathrooms, dumpster, electricity, et cetera. That's what the city's pretty much done. Now, there's a couple with better exceptions, there's a few with two, and there's some with three, that being Mr. and Mrs. Belairis. Mr. and Mrs. Belairis' one is the only one that isn't self-supporting with facilities. Now, she's got three, you gave her three, because nobody took her three away, and I think that's a terrible precedent to set, to take away the kiosk that she already has. So I think you have to grant her the three, I think that's the fair thing to do. But what I'm asking you to do today, I think the judicious thing to do, is to be conservative here, give her her three. You craft, and I'll be happy to help, I'll volunteer on a pro bono basis to assist Mr. Yakavone and maybe Mr. Vincent, to craft an ordinance that's comprehensive, that regulates these things, that deals with something like safety, that, because, you know, you get your permit and it's anchored, and then nobody ever looks at it again, there's no requirement anywhere that anybody looks at it again. Now, these are all destructible buildings, so under FEMA, that, you know, they, that's why they're allowed, they're going to blow away, because they just, they won't handle big hurricanes. So you're going to have a lot of these, and you, if you're going to permit them, you've got to regulate them, you've got to make sure that maybe there's an added cost to an occupational license, that there's an annual inspection to make sure there's a tie-down every year. These are things you have to consider as commissioners. You also have to decide at what point is, how many kiosks are going to now be an open market? We, in the code, we've got open-market buildings, but we don't have a definition for open-market, which is essentially a flea market. And, you know, you know the kind of people that are going to be in these kiosks and what they're going to be selling. So you have to regulate the number of them before you start to provide, have a market, and then be in the position where you have to provide services for these people. So it's really critical that you address this issue, pass an ordinance, and then make it so that in this particular instance, they don't have to come back and go through all this. If they're entitled to more based on your ordinance, they should be able to just get a permit and go forward. On the other hand, if after a judicious review, you have crafted an ordinance that doesn't expand beyond three, then everybody knows where they're at, but it doesn't allow a flood of applicants to come in after tonight and want to sit there and put kiosks all over Tarpon Springs. And right now, that's what's possible. I'm not saying it's going to happen, I'm not, I have really no idea, but I know as legislators, in your legislative capacity, when you have your legislative hat on, you've got to be worried about that. And this is your opportunity, before it's become a problem, to do something about it, because once they're out there, it's a nightmare to enforce them. And Cindy Sander can't spend all her time going to every kiosk to make sure they only have two appropriate signs. If you've got dozens of, you already have sixteen, if you really expand these, now she's going to be spending all her time making sure they're compliant with their signs, they're selling the appropriate products pursuant to the code, which is pretty restrictive, and it is, they're safe. You know, we have a whole host of issues that we need to determine before we allow this to go forward. It's going to affect the growth pattern, I feel in a very negative way, if you have a plethora of these all over the city. So definitely the tree issue, the easement, there's no way I could recommend to you, as a citizen lawyer, to sign that, that's a mistake, because it creates a precedent, and it's going to be a problem for you. It's unenforceable and illegal, frankly. So either change the term and add time to it and make it legally binding, or gift the trees to them and to others similarly situated, and improve the docks with some trees, because that is part of our plan. That's essentially my argument. I feel that you've, I don't know if you had the opportunity to review the two, Planning and Zoning, but there were a lot of concerns about these structures and the facilities that support them, there were a lot of issues. But the biggest one is that the existing dock owners, realtor, real estate owners that have gift shops, also feel that this brings in a situation where the competition for their same goods are going to be sold, they're just now getting through the depression that they've had, there's a lot of empty buildings, there's tenants, they can't rent their facilities, the tenants are leaving. So if you put a situation where for a very little startup cost, somebody can come in and compete with a brick and mortar guy, you're going to now have a lot of empty shops on the docks. I'm not really seeing how this is going to bring people down there and improve and lift up the retail environment, which is what the code is seeking to do. I don't see how this is really improving it, I think it's bringing more of the same and competing adversely economically with the people that already are there. But my primary concern here is the, you know, the issue of the bathrooms becomes bigger when you've got more of these all over town and you're unsupported. I mean, you've got six here, Mike Lowe's lot, he could put twelve based on the square footage, he's got forty thousand square feet, and he doesn't have to put any bathrooms either, because you don't have any bathrooms, because right now you don't have an ordinance. So maybe he wants fifty. You know, there is a, there's a Pandora's box here, and you have to think about it, you need to address it. Thank you.
All right. At this point, we will go to members of the public opposing the application. Remember, you've got to state your name and address for the record, and you've got four minutes. And did you take an oath?
Yeah. No, I didn't, you asked witnesses, I'm not testifying about anything, but I'll take an oath.
Okay. Well, you don't, you don't have to, but I'm going to count, because I'm going to remember that whatever you said is not under.
I'll take an oath, Michael A. Hulis.
Swear for, still truth, all truths.
I so do.
Thank you.
Fifteen oh four Riverside Drive. I have a parking lot right down the street on the other side of Hope Street on Dodikanese Boulevard. I was up here just shortly before, when George was applying before the other board, and we had a body that said the opposite of everything that was said tonight. My point is, is this, kiosks, whether they're a good idea or a bad idea, we've got to decide that issue. But what we're doing is, is we're letting strangers come down there and put kiosks down there some thirty-four to forty days a year, on the best weekend days out of the year. The flea market type that Beverly said, and for some reason, we are proving it all the time, and they're not paying taxes there, and they're shutting my business down. George is not shutting anybody's business down. But it's also true that these kiosks are selling the same products as some of the gift shops who have paid for their mortars and their buildings. Yes, it's probably true, we should decide how much these parking lots should get in the form of kiosks, one, two, or three, or four, or six. But I'll say this, you approve George's, and I'm going to be here for approval, especially if you keep shutting me down, and the strangers have the kiosks in front of me. And the mayor, you were following, you couldn't make all of the gift shops happy, so you were going with the majority. But it's obvious, the majority tonight don't want to do this, but now we're going to follow the law. And I noticed the city attorney followed the law in the other hearing, it's following it now, but not in the other hearing. By the way, your statute says you can only have these kiosks on the docks once a month. The city manager does not have the discretion to have it more than once a month. The next paragraph says that if there's two times that you have to have it in the month, the only thing the city manager can do is offer an other location. You should look at your statute twelve point five to eleven. Y'all don't follow the law there. So how many, and we miss, who's following these laws? Y'all don't follow your own, and look what we've created, one jumbled-up mess, all because we won't follow the Constitution or follow our laws. One day we got, we follow the laws, and the other day we don't. We got a sack, and anytime we want to use the law, we pull it out, otherwise we throw it back in the sack. And look what we've created. I almost, one group tells me two and two is five, and the other group tells me two and two is three. Nobody wants to say it's two and two is four, and follow it for everybody. I almost have to agree with Mrs. Corbin. Y'all better stop these special permits and stop everything, and let's discuss whether kiosks are a good idea and how many a parking lot can have. If I tell you I want a kiosk and be with George, you say I'm doing it for my personal reasons, I will be down here to ask, and I don't want to hear that I'm hurting other property owners. But then if I tell you no kiosks, that's because, you know, I want to stop those in front of me, I don't know which way to go, so I'm going to be neutral on this issue. Okay? Y'all have got me so confused.
Yeah, we could tell you're neutral.
I think it's obvious, my point, that we should decide, like we should, how many kiosks and parking lots are going to have, and we don't have to come up here and beg and plead on whether we're going to get it, and depending on who we are and who's parked. I'll say something else, I'm getting a suspicion that there's something other than kiosks involved here, this picture doesn't look good. And I don't think it's over kiosks.
Hey, if I might start now, it was a great eloquent speech, but every time somebody get up here and make an eloquent speech, I wish that we would politely not collapse, that we could just do that, everybody can talk, say whatever they want to say, and we can make a decision.
Mayor Archie, I have a hundred and ninety-five signatures in opposition to this project that I forgot to submit, I'd like to submit them in the record right now. The object, it's called the Citizens' Objection to Belairis Kiosk Project. We, the undersigned citizens of the city of Tarpon Springs, hereby object to permitting the conditional use of multiple kiosk structures to be placed on the Belairis property under Decanese Boulevard to create an outdoor flea market type bazaar, and that is not the type of retail environment we hope to have at the sponge docks, nor does it conform to the comprehensive plan. We specifically object and urge our city commissioners to vote against this proposal, and that's, there's a hundred and ninety-five here.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Good evening, Mayor Archie and Commissioners, thanks for your time. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Belairis for their service to the community, and I'm happy that they want to improve their property, I just can't agree on how they want to do it. My name is Athena Sardoulias, six thirty-four East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm a shareholder-owner of Tarpon Sponge Incorporated on the sponge docks, and I'm a tenant in the sponge exchange. So for those of you who heard me speak last week, I apologize that it's going to be a little redundant. So I can only speak to how I think this will negatively affect my business. In the least, my customers use the public restrooms in the sponge exchange. Six more kiosks now, and probably more in the future, will already put a strain on these limited facilities. The kiosk business has a financial advantage over a brick and mortar store, operating costs are much lower than mine, rent utilities, so forth. The general open-air market type of image, in my mind, implies discounted pricing. So in order to compete, I would have to lower my prices and reduce my margin of profit, placing a greater burden on my ability to meet my operating expenses. Of greatest concern to me is the precedent that this would be set. Other property owners could follow suit, as we mentioned earlier. So for me personally, I fear my eventual loss, a loss of my ability to remain in business in my present location. If this is approved, I believe it will mean... If this is approved, I believe it will mean a negative turning point for the Sponge Docks area. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good evening. Um, my name is Katie Karasinos. I live at one one oh two Marina Drive in Tarpon Springs. Uh, my husband and I own Sponge Diver Supply located at six ninety-eight Gil Decanese Boulevard in the Sponge Docks. Um, my family's roots are here in the Sponge Docks. I have three little boys that I want to see the success and longevity of the historical Sponge Docks. I have submitted testimony and photographs of business operations by Mr. Belairs at the previous two city planning meetings. I would like to state that my intent was to back my testimony and not to offend Mrs. Belairs. That being said though, I would like to say that the degrading comments and accusations and implications of city citizens speaking against her application spoken in the last meeting by our former mayor was absolutely irrelevant to the application, uncalled for, and an embarrassment to the city as a former mayor speaks so low of our citizens. I'm here tonight to give you my concerns as a citizen and a business owner here in Tarpon Springs. Now, I for one am not against the beautification of one's property. And adding landscapes to the Belairs parking lot can help the desolate look of the parking lot. And quite frankly, I'm not opposed to the city's tax dollars paying as landscaping to the parking lot will help the set of Dodikanese Boulevard and in turn help the economy of the Sponge Docks. But I am concerned that if this project is approved, that the proposed kiosk will look as though of the ones that I see daily operated by Mr. Belairs. And as you all know, there are longstanding issues of code enforcement at the Sponge Docks and absolutely nothing is regulated. I'm also very concerned that if this is approved tonight for six kiosks that applied, that, um, that you'll be inundated by similar applications. And Tarpon Springs will no longer be known as the sponge capital of the world, but the flea market capital of the world. And essentially, that will be detrimental to the historic preservation of Sponge Docks. Thank you for, uh, my consideration of my opinion and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Schreier and I reside at seventeen eleven Hunter Lane. First, I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. I am a student of the Public Policy and Administration Program at St. Petersburg College. Our program requires a hands-on learning experience dealing with local issues of concern to the citizens. Luckily, as a longtime resident of Tarpon Springs, I have found an issue that both satisfies my school requirements but also has meaning to me as a member of the community. I would like to address the proposed resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero one. I have several concerns regarding this resolution. First and foremost, is the setting of a precedent that can have unintended consequences, such as making our beautiful and historic city, in the words of Ms. Coburn, a hut town. My second concern that I have is the city providing the landscaping for the applicant when they do not meet the proper requirement for the city tree bank. As stated in the report for this resolution, one of the goals is to promote tourism. However, I do not believe that adding three kiosks with the money and energy involved in this is where our efforts are best utilized. We already have ample restaurants and shops on the docks and throughout the rest of our town. I believe that our efforts should be directed towards promoting these existing businesses through things like nighting islands. In addition to that, I do not agree with the fact that the applicant is not required to provide facilities such as bathrooms, which means that they will be relying on public restrooms. Furthermore, does the applicant have a plan for securing these kiosks at night to avoid increased police presence to ensure the safety of the property? Another concern pertaining to safety is if anyone has given thought to a possible dangerous situation as far as people pulling out of a parking lot covered with these kiosks onto a busy street with trees being visible, visual obstacles. With the addition of the trees in the kiosks, will this be creating an unsafe situation for both the drivers and the pedestrians? One concern that was mentioned in the documentation related to this resolution, which I share, is will this be creating unfair competition to the brick and mortar businesses? There is a three-year timeframe for this project to be completed. During this time, will the construction affect other local businesses or traffic on Dodikanese, which is a public road? Uh, another major concern is that the location in question is under sea level. Is there a provision for reinspection annually of the anchoring of these structures? As far as mentioning for tourism, putting up the kiosks to beautify the parking lots, do we have any guarantee that these kiosks will not be vacant even with a one-year lease? That's gonna create an eyesore just as the parking lots that would not be helping our goal of beautification. Last but not least, I'm extremely concerned at the passing of this resolution and there is no current regulating ordinance for these structures. As a student of public policy and administration, I find this very alarming. Hopefully, these concerns will help you to reconsider passing this resolution without initially addressing these issues, such as creating regulations and provisions for reinspection of the anchoring of these structures first. Once again, thank you very much for your time.
Are you? I feel like a barber shop next.
Good evening and thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. Um, I am a resident of the Sponge Docks. I, my name is Maritza Skimiti and I live at one one seven West Cedar Street. We are one block facing the Sponge Docks. And I'm here for, um, a different reason. I'm here because we feel, I represent many of the residents in and around the Sponge Docks who live and reside there, that we are vehemently against this notion, this particular concept, because we believe that the Sponge Docks are a national treasure and anything that hides the Sponge Docks at this point, um, or any further building on this side of the street of Dodikanese should not be permitted. It hides a national treasure. If it had been on the other side of the street, I don't think there would have been too much opposition. We do not want this concept. We do not want to create a kiosk city for Tarpon Springs. We want to elevate this particular area and we would hope that the city fathers strenuously, strenuously vote against this because we do not want this. And we would also hope that you would entertain the notion to invite possibly, uh, a competition for architects to, uh, compete, to design something for this national treasure that would merit what it really is. And we hope that, um, you do vote against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, everybody. My name is Roseanne Pappas. I live at eight oh two Landston Court. I am one of the co-owners of the Sponge Exchange and I just want to say that this is about keeping our eye on the vision of what we see for the docks. It is a national treasure. Everything that the Planning and Zoting Board has done to redevelop, to come up with great plans for landscaping and improvements down there, we are thrilled about it. What we are only thrilled about it is it elevates what is already there. This does not elevate. Imagine kiosks from the old Pappas Restaurant all the way down to Junely's, hiding the riverfront. Now, I understand that in these times, we have had to cut rents. We are happy, we are keeping people who probably we shouldn't keep because of economic times. And what you are creating, if you allow these kiosks, is a way around which will just hurt the business owners that have to pay all the taxes and have to meet all of the standards that the people in the kiosks don't meet. And I agree one hundred percent. They won't be there for a year because we all knew that they only wanna be there during the season. Well, we all wanna be there only during the season, but we don't get to pick and choose that. If you have a building and you're part of this community, you have to weather the months that aren't very good. But what we're trying to do with redevelopment is increase revenue. Redevelopment will bring up levels. This does not bring them up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Sophia Zeronias. I'm actually representing my father Andreas, who I just wanted to step out. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here due to health issues. Um, we own Demetrius on the Water and Migna. I live at eight forty-eight Riverside Drive. Um, I guess my biggest concern is the timeframe. It's not only the kiosk. I have a great respect for Mr. Belairs, um, and what he's done and how he's helped preserve our history of the Sponge Docks. But my greatest concern is the three-year timeframe. What's to say that now in three years, for the next three years, we're not gonna have construction and wood and a nuisance? And not only that, is what's to say that this won't attract, like I said, a different clientele than we're looking at? Um, my concern is that this is not a viable option to beautify the Sponge Docks. The Sponge Docks is something that people come for, that they used to come for. I've tried to work with several cruise lines that no longer wanna come and try to do excursions to the Sponge Docks because, I hate to say, but their marketing team has called it a tourist trap. We don't want that. We have so much more to offer and I don't know if this is the exact right way to do it. Um, on a personal note, there was a comment said at the last meeting that I, you know, a lot of comments just need to be ignored because you just have to sometimes consider the emotion of the evening. But there was a comment that said that as a property owner, they have an investment. My father of twenty-three years has a true investment. He didn't get the restaurant from birthright or because he's married to and to his family. He got that restaurant because my mother and I and him and my family worked every single day to create that investment. And that is what you need to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Going once, twice, gone. All right, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, gone. Um, does the applicant care to make a closing statement or summary or present any rebuttal?
I won't be all that long, guys. Um, comments made about, um, if a hurricane, the structures will be a hazard. Quite frankly, as you and I all know, that if a hurricane hits Tarpon Springs, there won't be a Sponge Docks to worry about. Everything will be, I mean, the no-name storm put all of the Sponge Docks five foot underwater, so I don't think it's a problem. We'll have a whole lot more to worry about than six kiosks, whether they're standing or not. We will meet all building codes that is required by the city for the kiosk. Um, we are before you requesting the kiosk through the proper process. There are current kiosks, Mr., um, the attorney's client has a kiosk next door to ours that was built with no permit, no, uh, following any code, uh, requirements whatsoever. Um, and most of the kiosks that you see in the affidavits that were given to you do not and have not permit by the city. We are at least trying to go through the proper process. Um, comments that there are existing three. Please look at the plan that, uh, the sketch that is drawn that was given to you in your backup. You see six kiosks. You do not see a tent. We are putting six kiosks, not in addition to what we have. We are improving the land, not adding to some disarray that is there and adding some additional. We are adding to improve the side of the land. The fact that the kiosks are going to block the historic water view, quite frankly, we can put a structure up there thirty-five foot high and block the entire street. So that is not relevant, the fact that, um, if they actually don't block the view, they will enhance people to see the view. In the original plan, if we had more kiosks on the property, there was going to be a cafe right on the water with kiosks there and seating and benches. And that's the goal, to bench us around the trees and beautify the property and make it welcome, make it much better sight than it looks today. Um, as far as competition, it's not a relevant argument, although I will address for those who think it might be, is that, um, competition is good enterprise anywhere in the United States. Um, but I've worked down at the Sponge Docks in retail for twenty-five, almost thirty years, and I will tell you that price war goes on in the brick and mortar shops every single day down there. So, um, and that if a kiosk isn't open three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's gonna be a detriment to the area. We have shops down the Sponge Docks that close during the summer. Um, it's been a tradition of some families, they close and they come back in the fall because they, the family goes to Greece. I've known many of them that do that. Um, operating cost per square footage compared to a shop also is irrelevant to the argument, mostly because, um, but I will address it. Um, the amount of rent recharge is not known, but by square footage of what they will pay, if you actually do the math, I don't think there's that big of a difference by square footage of what a vendor will pay. As far as, um, the Belairs's, um, investment, that property was not handed down by birthright. It was bought by my husband and, um, and his brothers, who are mostly still alive today. And we do have a large investment on both sides of the street. What we're trying to do is improve the look of what is there. Kiosks in the smart code are allowed. It's in the smart code. It's a conditional use. We will abide by whatever rules that are needed to have the kiosks. As I said earlier, I don't think six kiosks, um, and as staff has said, six kiosks do not override your sewage in the city of Tarpon Springs. In the original plan, where there was twenty-one, or if we develop any more in the future, bathrooms would be placed on the property. Um, when it is required, we will do what is required. We're not trying to skirt anything. As far as the easement, um, and that may be about a contention with the commissioners. I'm not sure. How that came about and the reason there was a discussion of an easement is because when the city wanted to do the beautification of putting trees down at the Sponge Docks along where our parking lot is, typically, they go in the sidewalk. There is not enough area in those sidewalks to put in the trees. There, hence, city considered asking us for a ten-foot easement and the discussion went from there. I don't need an easement to put trees in. Um, this was a mutual agreement between city staff and ourselves, um, about having an easement so you could put the type of trees that you wanted on the docks versus the type of trees that I will put on the docks if it's my choice. Um, if that is a, um, a deal breaker as far as approving our application, we are open for negotiation. We'll put, we will not give the easement to the city and we'll put our own trees in. Um, they probably won't be the trees that you particularly wanted to put in, but we'll do the requirement of trees as we're supposed to. Uh, as I say, we're following the rules. But we don't have to give you the easement. The easement was something to accommodate the city more than us. Um, and the reason it was a revocable easement is because this plan that we have at the docks may or may not be a permanent plan. And if we have an offer or an idea or funds where we decide to put a structure, the structure will go to the street, to the sidewalk, just like all the others, to comply. And so it sticks in with the rest of Sponge Docks and we'll put trees other places on, in the area. So, um, that was the reason for that, is because if we decide to put a structure, we don't want the trees along the front blocking the structure so we can't put one up. So that was one of the reasons. And it may not, you know, and... And it may not, you know, and that may not, nobody knows the future, that might not be an argument at all. Maybe whatever we decide to build there, those trees once we're put in, won't be moved. I don't know. Operating cost assumption. The assumption of product, it's a retail product, but again, it's not relevant. But we're not trying to compete with t-shirts or shoes or anything else that's ever been, that's being sold down there. We're trying to get vendors to bring in different products. Vendors who have a following so that we draw from the Tampa Bay area. You know, we all have a flurry in the wintertime, and anymore it's just almost a flurry. It's not as what it used to be. But there's lulls in our season. And what we're trying to do is fill those odd months with vendors that have following from the Tampa Bay area that will bring other people to the sponge docks, that will shop in other stores, will eat in the restaurants, to have more traffic. That is the goal. And I know everybody's still stuck on this, it's a flea market look. It's not a flea market. It virtually is what happens when the associations have art sales and you have tents up and down the docks. That's not the look we want. And all we are asking is that you would consider this plan as an improvement, which I believe that it will be. But, and I know there's comments made that, you know, people pay a lot of taxes. I love to compare their tax bill to mine. I believe ours is over seventy-five thousand plus about a year. So we do have a large investment. We pay our taxes, just like everybody else down there, we have a strong investment. Thank you. Do you have any questions later?
Yes. Ms. Vincent, do you have any comments? All right, at this point, it is appropriate for commission consideration. I'd just like to say one thing. I'd like to remind the board that it's up to each of you to determine whether any, anything that anybody said or presented as evidence or argument addresses the issues that the criteria to be considered or constitutes substantial competent evidence. We've heard a lot of comments and opinions, and I would suggest that some of it probably didn't address the issues or is not competent substantial or anything. It's up to you to weed that out.
Thank you, Mr. Yakovov. What I'm gonna do is, is opening up for my colleagues. I think some of us in the Tarpan is just, you know, delighted to be first, so.
And half of you may.
Go ahead, you know.
Thank you. First, you know, first of all, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody who's in attendance tonight, especially those of you who got up and spoke. It's surely not an easy thing to get up and speak at pieces, especially when it's something as passionate as this. Clearly, this is an item of much controversy, much contention. It's in an area where most of you have a lot of investments and lives at risk stake. As I say, we're not all going to agree on the outcome tonight. I think it's important, though, that we all recognize that Mr. Blairis surely has contributed a lot in most of his life to this area. Some of you have done that as well. So I think it's important that through our discussion, we certainly give much due respect to him. I do have some questions for you, Ms. Vincent. Is there, now, for a conditional use, is there a site plan that's required?
A concept plan is required.
Conceptual plan, not a site plan, but conceptual plan?
Correct.
Okay. On this conceptual plan, how many parking spaces are proposed?
I have not counted the parking spaces behind there. They clearly have adequate parking on the site to meet the use. In fact, they actually would be exempt from parking requirements.
Sure. So how about handicap parking spaces?
That's regulated in the Florida Building Code.
Okay. Is there a dumpster shown on site of the conceptual plan?
No, there's not.
Is that something that typically would be shown?
We will evaluate, on a concept plan at this level, probably not, no. It would be more when they come in to actually do a site plan to do the work. If a dumpster is required, it will be, they'll be required to have one at that point, though.
If someone comes to the city and wants to build a building or wants to develop a project, typically, how long do we give them to apply for the permit before we approve their project?
For a regular site plan, for permitted use outright, whatever. Once you apply for, the way the code reads is you have one year to apply for a building permit. And that's been interpreted since my time here and prior to my time here that, literally that. Once you apply, basically you're in a suspended state. So once you've applied for a building permit, there's no time limit after that to complete a project. So you could come in. And in case in point, we have several residential development projects that were, permits were pulled and construction began that went dormant during the downturn, that are now coming back to life again. They don't have to go back to site plan approval. As long as everything is being constructed as it was originally approved.
So could you explain why or detail the time plans for this particular application?
Because it is open-ended and because we wanted there to be closure on this, typically there would not be an ending date on it. So we recommended, you know, actually came to an agreement with them, that three years would certainly be more than adequate to complete the project. Absent that, there would not be, as long as they came in and applied for the permit and established the project, there wouldn't be a timeframe on how long, you know, how long it would take them to put those six kiosks on the property. This is a finite, and so if they don't complete it within the three years, then after that, they cannot come back and add anything to. Let's say they've only put three up, and three years it's gone by. With this condition, they would not be able to add any more without coming back and revisiting the conditional use.
Sure. So would you have a problem limiting that, limiting that for one year?
I don't have a problem with that.
On the conceptual plan, it shows somewhat of a landscape plan.
Right.
Now, with the ten-foot easement, the ten-foot easement would begin from the sidewalk and go ten feet approximately to the north, correct?
Correct.
So on a conceptual plan, those are where the kiosks are, and that's where the landscape is. So where in fact would their landscape plan be? Would it abut the city's ten-foot easement?
The landscape plan that's shown here would satisfy their requirement for landscaping. It is on their private property. The easement serves for them to be able to participate in the Tree Bank program. So it would meet both requirements.
Okay, thank you. Let's say a property owner in the sponge docks applied for a site plan to build a new thousand-square-foot commercial building. Would the commercial building be required to have bathrooms?
Under the Florida Building Code, I believe it would, but I'm not the building official. It may actually depend on the actual, if it's a retail building, I assume that it would, but I'm not the building official, so I don't know.
Sure.
I understand, yeah.
But to your knowledge?
My knowledge, yes.
Okay. So in your opinion, as a principal planner for the city, do the Yoder's Handcaps and Gazebo's represent architecturally or historically correct? Are they correct within the working port authenticity?
Based on other types of architecture and other things on the docks, yes, I think they're compatible with what is there.
Okay. That's all I have to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away. First, I would like to say that, you know, it's been thrown out there tonight about our sponge docks as a national treasure. Well, I have to say that Mr. Blairis knows that our sponge docks is a national treasure, as anybody knows. And he's contributing quite a bit to this community, and we should give him the respect that he deserves. May I ask about the trees, Ms. Vincent? They coming, or tax dollars coming, or paying for the trees, or is that coming out of the Tree Bank?
That would come out of the Tree Bank.
Thank you.
And by way of explanation for somebody who may not know, that money comes from developers. Developers pay into the Tree Bank in lieu of planting trees on site when they can't. So it's not taxpayer dollars. It comes from developers that develop throughout the city.
Thank you. I wanted clarification on that, because it was stated that tax dollars were paying for our trees. Also, I think my question was answered about the term. So there'd be an annual lease on these that would be to the applicant?
Yeah.
An annual lease, okay. And Ms. Vincent, you had mentioned that this project is compliant with the Land Development Code. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it fits within our special area plan?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. I did have a question about three years. Do you need, or I guess I should ask the applicant, is three years necessary to complete the project?
Why don't you go to the microphone?
Yeah, you might want to hear that.
No, we don't need three years. That was the question, whether we need the three years. Can I?
Could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry?
State your name and address for the record.
Okay, yeah. George Blairis, ten twenty-eight Peninsula Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Can I ask a question before anybody asks any more questions? Because I didn't understand that I wouldn't have the opportunity to speak whenever the mayor mentioned, or whoever mentioned, maybe it was the attorney. I was sort of following the rules of the thought of the Planning and Zoning Committee. What I'm trying to say is, I would like to say a few words, and very important words. Is it too late, or is it possible that I speak after?
If someone asks you a question, I suppose you can, or invites you to speak, but strictly according to the rules.
No, I want to go according to the rules. I'm just, I'm trying to find out what the rules are.
At this point, I think you need to respond to questions.
Okay. Am I going to get an opportunity to speak after this?
Probably not unless someone invites you to speak.
Or even before you pull a vote, which is very important?
We're through with the case part. This is the questioning part.
Oh, sorry. All right, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Ms. Vincent?
Did I answer your questions? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, thank you. When we had, we have a design plan right now that, for the sponge docks, that I believe the city is donating close to a million dollars?
Roughly, one point four, I believe, is what.
Close to a million, now, okay. Well, during that,
Dedicating to.
We're dedicating to the sponge docks through our budget process. During that design review, whatever, the architect or, you know, Mr. Hoffman's design company, presented this as part of the plan, which I believe we've agreed to, and it does show.
It hasn't been fully ratified by the board, but that is one concept plan specifically for dealing with the parking lots that Mr. Hoffman has presented at various public workshops.
Okay. Which, okay, and this has been in various workshops?
Yes.
Right.
Just so it's clear on the record, that's in the record?
Yes.
Yes.
And you're pointing to?
Labeled as the rendering and the, uh?
The rendering?
The rendering.
Rendering and the backup plan, and the backup.
So these kiosks were kind of a concept down there. Actually, they're on that property with the trees. And we've also had many workshops regarding the plans for the sponge docks, which we've gotten, which quite a few business owners down there aren't happy with us redoing the sponge docks and revitalizing it. There's been many meetings, and I've been at many meetings, and there's been some flak. But regardless, would you rather see these or this down at the sponge docks? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So of course, I will begin with you, if you don't mind. I was glad to see that the applicant was going to grant the city ten feet of landscaping easement. Now, we just learned that that can be taken away at any time. Is there any time limit? How long are we going to have this easement company? Because if we're going to invest all this money, to have, develop and place all these trees, I guess Mr. Blairis can say, well, I don't want them now, just go ahead and remove them.
I think my best is the attorney. Yeah, I think it's going to be conditioned on redevelopment of the property, right? So if they redevelop the property, then the easement would disappear. But as long as they're using it in the fashion they propose to use it, the easement remains.
Well, again, it doesn't give me a good comfort knowing that the applicant can sell the property to someone and they can say, well, now I want you to remove the easement. And then the taxpayers of Tarpon Springs are going to be losing all the money they're going to invest them, all right? Is that a agreement with me?
If the subsequent purchaser seeks to redevelop the property, then at that point, the easement would disappear. If they continue the property in the same way, they would be subject to the same easement.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, I mean, Ms. Vincent? Sorry. The smart code, and we all agree that you're the expert on the smart code, but we all attended the same school, the same training as well. The smart code, the table four, the SDB district indicates that the kiosks they're allowed to have is a conditional use, but it does not indicate how many that you're allowed to have in any piece of property, all right?
That's correct.
So what makes the determination?
It's a conditional use, I think.
Is that going to be based on compatibility of the area?
That's one consideration on the number of kiosks. I think you can make that.
Is there any other consideration that we can take?
I think following the intent of the smart code, and then also following, you know, the intent of the redevelopment project, you know, creating the livable, you know, the livable, walkable community and improving on the walkability of the sponge docks. That certainly was an underlying premise, both of the special area plan, which was the conference of plan amendment to support the smart code, and the smart code itself. And so, and as I spoke earlier, when you can break up these expanses of asphalt with landscaping, with businesses, albeit in this instance with, you know, with kiosks, that it creates a better pedestrian environment. It brings, it makes it more interesting to people. So from that perspective, yes, I think these kiosks are, you know, a very viable means of improving the walkability and meeting the intent of the smart code.
I agree with you, but it also says that the smart code says that you create a walkable experience. Well, the sponge docks have that already.
They do, but I also hear people also, you know, I've literally heard people on the sponge docks say, they don't walk to my end because of breaks and the parking lots and things like that. And that's, you know, that's a, I've actually heard people say that. And it's well-known in urban planning and urban studies and urban design that when you have large surface parking lots in the middle of your shopping areas, it is a detractor to pedestrians and is a detractor to business in the area. I mean, yes, you have to have parking. Doesn't mean it has to be lot line to lot line, front to back, and screening those things and breaking those expanses of asphalt up with landscaping, with buildings certainly is, or kiosks is certainly a better environment than what's there now. That's my professional opinion.
Yes. In a backup, we provide with information on the existing.
Excuse me for a second now. I try to steal this, but you whisper like I do. And that's a little loud, so if you could tell, let everybody hear what Vice Mayor is saying, we definitely would appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, we've been providing information in the backup that we have, uh, believe eight or maybe more kiosks already, it's on the Sponge Docks. Uh, I was advised that most of those are not, they didn't have, they've been built without a legal permit, is that correct, Mr. Licorice?
I understand, yes.
Okay, so how are we going to compare and see if those kiosks there is comparable with something that is not supposed to exist? So we have an issue there?
One of the reasons that the kiosks were specifically put in as a conditional use was because of the ad hoc nature that they have been put in. I mean, that, that's, I mean, that, that absolutely was a consideration for allowing the kiosk as a conditional use, because they have been part of the culture down there and part of the docks for so long, whether they were permitted or not.
Without a, without a permit to be built?
I'm sure, there are some down there that do not have permits.
Okay, thank you. The law, uh, the goal of the special plan is to create an environment that encourages development of the existing properties that supports, that are compatible with the surrounding areas. So if we don't have legal structures, I guess we cannot compare with anything. That's my opinion. Uh, it was mentioned earlier about, uh, restrooms. Well, the kiosk shops usually have one person, and of course, they have customers, they go in and out, and they are obligated, they're required to have restrooms, am I right? Um, the building, the old lighthouse, which is on the other end of the Sponge Docks, there are several shops in there, they're also required to have restrooms there. The sponge exchange, where Mr. Papas is the owner there, he is required to have restrooms. I don't see why the other businesses, like the six kiosks, are not required to provide facilities. I'm not really sure where their employees and their customers, what facilities are going to use. They're going to use Danny's restaurants, or they're going to use Mikano's restaurant. Obviously, they must create, they must have some kind of, uh, facilities, or they should have facilities for the employees and their, uh, customers. Now, I also like to say that I have a great respect for, uh, Mr. Blairs, for his efforts. For many years, he promoted his diving exhibition businesses, well, the Sponge Docks. He made many documentaries, and he helped the economy, and he helped the businesses down at the Sponge Docks. But the special area plan was developed to promote the serious agriculture, the heritage, to maintain the units, the uniqueness that we have, and the charm down at the Sponge Docks. By going into the flea market environment, that's now how we're going to maintain our charm at the Sponge Docks, and also our heritage that we've been, Mr. Blairs worked so hard all these years to, to promote. My, uh, sorry, Mr. Blairs, maybe we don't agree with that. We must find ways to continue bringing businesses to Tarpon Springs and to the Sponge Docks. The Sponge Docks, we, we all know that is very important to our local economy. Many people are coming to Sponge Docks to buy sponges, to buy gas from the kiosk, they eat at the restaurants, they stay at the hotels, and buy gas, where we get the dollar, the penny for panela, so we can actually build our infrastructure. So we must be very, very concerned how we're going to develop the Sponge Docks, because it is the future of Tarpon Springs, it is the future of our economy, the future of our kids. So I am very concerned about that. My recommendation to, uh, Mr. Blairs, of course, I'm not going to tell him how to do his property, is to work with, uh, Mr., Mrs. Lemon, who she is the economic developer specialist, to attract or to bring, uh, investors here. We can actually develop a place where they can have stores, they can have cafes, waterfront restaurants, where the people can enjoy this beautiful view that we have down at the Sponge Docks, not to have a concept of a flea market, I'm not in favor for that. Um, so I do not support this application, thank you.
Commissioner Lawson.
Thank you. My notes are kind of all over the place, so forgive me if this doesn't flow smoothly. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, Mr. Blairs and former Mayor Blairs to, to discuss this project, and I appreciate them, uh, attempting to find a way to improve on their property. And I also appreciate them attempting to do it right, uh, in terms of going through this process. I know that there are, uh, other kiosks that exist, uh, in the city and the Sponge Docks that did not actually go through this process. And I also want to point out that a lot of what was said at the podium isn't really what we are allowed to consider when we, when we vote tonight. We have very specific standards for review, um, whether or not this promotes unfair competition. That might be a valid argument, but it isn't something we're really allowed to, uh, to analyze. Whether or not they would do a good job of, you know, upkeep on the property, that's not some, that's a code enforcement issue, but that's not something we're allowed to look at. Um, I'm not convinced the bathroom issue is an issue. I, I think with the city bathrooms, I, I, I don't think the bathroom issue is an issue. The, the blocked water view, it's an interesting argument, but I don't think that's one that's part of our standards for review. How many signs they can display, I, I don't think that's something that, you know, that's a code enforcement issue again. So what it comes down to, to me, is compatibility. Uh, that's the one issue that, that I look very seriously at this. Um, I know the smart code allows kiosks. As the Vice Mayor pointed out, it does not specifically state how many are allowed. Uh, if you go down to the Sponge Docks right now, as was discussed, uh, this evening, there are some kiosks down there. However, what we have down there right now are one or two on a property. Um, we don't have a, a property with a high density of kiosks. And I think if we were to suddenly do that now, that, that would radically change things at Sponge Docks. And I think, uh, that's where compatibility comes into play. Uh, I also think, and I think that's the, the most important issue here, is the compatibility issue. When, when you look though at a long-term vision for the Sponge Docks, I think something Mr. Hula said, uh, was very interesting. He's got a parking lot, and, uh, maybe he would want to put up six kiosks, or, or, or maybe more. Uh, so, I, I guess we have to analyze what we want the long-term vision for the Sponge Docks to be, uh, in terms of kiosks. And I, and I think the idea that was brought up by Mr. Hula is that we have a discussion, uh, maybe a workshop, to discuss how many kiosks are appropriate, uh, per property, or per, you know, square footage, or whatever the case may be. I, I think that's probably a good idea, but that's something to discuss another night. Um, on this particular night, we're looking at this particular agenda item, and we can only look at the standards for review. Several of them, I, I don't think really, I, I don't think the application has a problem with. But the one that I do find problematic, uh, is the compatibility issue, and for that reason, I cannot support the application. I'm prepared to make a motion, or I, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Well, I, I'd like to have a, a couple of comments, you know, and I, I tried to wait a while, you know, uh, normally, uh, most people that come don't, I guess, call in the question, you know, uh, my, uh, credibility, uh, honesty, and I'm not sure what Mr. Hulas was talking about when, uh, he believes that the city has this sack. And for some people, we rent in the sack, and the law applies, and for some people, it don't apply. And for people that normally know that, I try to be fair across the board. I respect Mr. Blairs and what he's done down there, as I respect a lot of the businesses and what they done, have done. But it doesn't pertain as to how I vote, or what I vote for. I, I hope in the end I have as many friends as I did when y'all came in. But you know, uh, I've been here long enough to know that some people only consider me a friend when I vote the way that they desire for me to vote. And then, you know, I'm no longer a friend, so, uh, this is a, a complicated issue. And it's a very troubling issue, uh, because I do think that there are a lot of things that need to be considered. Um, one is I've heard enough to know that after the vote tonight, no matter which way it goes, is that there are some things that need to be looked at as far as kiosks are concerned. I'm not one to say that in the middle of the, um, the game, you change the rules. You know, it's just like the issue that came before us, uh, let's, let's hold up on voting one way or the other based upon, um, I don't like something, and let's change it. There don't, there are no limits as to kiosks, maybe there should be. Maybe that's something that needs to be looked at as far as the smart code is concerned. Uh, but as Commissioner Lawson talked about, that's something for, um, another day. You know, um, would I like to see them all up and down the Sponge Docks? Or would I like to see them all down, uh, Hynellis Avenue and the rest? No, so I do think that when you enact some things, you need to look at it again. But do you look at it in the middle of a, an issue? And as I said before, and it's great that we have the petition and the rest, and how many people are this or that, but I look at what is, what is the law say? And the funny thing about this whole thing is that maybe if it wasn't Mr. Blairs, he would be the one to come up, and everybody would look to him as to what the character of the Sponge Docks should be, and he would be that one that everybody would look to in a sense of the historical value there. But now, Mr. Blairs is the one that's bringing the project, so, uh, as I say, the shoe is on the other foot right now. There are some things that was talked about that I feel like we need to have, you know, some clarification as, as regards to the, uh, revocable, uh, easement. Uh, I'm not sure if this is going to be drawn up such that, that, uh, easement basically goes with whatever this conditional use is. Um, and if that's going to be the way, that there are other property owners that might be at the dock area or somewhere else that we need that type of property, uh, and we want the easement, you know, I think, you know, what's, what's good for one is good for the other. I don't do it because, uh, it's former Mayor, uh, Blairs or, uh, Mr. Blairs, uh, you know, but because that's the way that the city would like to proceed. Uh, it's ironic, and I listened to the, uh, Vice Mayor talked about kiosks and talked about flea markets. We don't want flea markets, then we need to do something as far as the smart code is concerned. I mean, right now, technically, that's in there. You know, so i- it's, that's a problem all the way around. Sometime when you entertain some things and you put some things in place, then you have to come back and say, hey, listen, this is something that we might need to change, you know? Um, the irony is, yeah, I've talked to some of the, the owners down that way, and they always told me that, hey, they don't fear competition. Competition is great. Competition means that, hey, you got people coming, and if I got people coming, I've got an opportunity to sell my goods. I, I'm, you know, I'm really, I'm, I'm kind of confused about this kiosk thing, because one minute, you know, it's six kiosks that's bad, and it's, but it's bringing all these people that are going to be using the restrooms, I, I don't, you know, I, bringing people to Tarpon bad, or it's, you know, I, I, I don't understand that. Six people that's, that's basically, or five, because I, I think that when we looked at it, they were able to add, they got one, so they could add five more, I think that was the recommendation from, uh, staff, if I'm correct in that. So we call them our five now, additional ones, and five people who will impact the bathrooms there. And that part, you know, I guess, one instance, it doesn't matter, then it does, because the city built bathrooms there. Basically, because only the one that's being subsidized was the one that was considered public. Almost every other shop owner there faces what's saying, unless you're at a restaurant, you can't use my facilities. I don't care which one it was, you go in, nope, you go somewhere else. But now it seems that the kiosks should have restrooms when some of the business owners don't even allow people to use the restrooms that they have down there. Which created the problem where we had to spend actual taxpayers' money to build restrooms there at the Sponge Dock area. So some of the things that I hear concerns me. I'm not sure, and this is something that I'm not even sure if we can put it in the code, discussing when we start talking about inexpensive items and the rest of that. What's inexpensive, the one person that is expensive to the next, what's affordable to one is not affordable to the, the next. I'm not sure how and what that's going to be looked at, at as far as the enforcement aspect of those smaller items. Um, what will the found product look like as far as the kiosks are concerned? I, I guess it gets down to what, uh, Commissioner Lawson talked about as far as compatibility.
They, they're very, will be very similar, substantially similar to what's on attachment, the attachment to the resolution. Um, they're going to have to look somewhat substantially similar to that. Um, there may be some allowance for areas underneath to be, you know, locked and closed, to, you know, to store a product, but basically, um, and similar to the existing, you know, if you've seen the eucalyptus kiosk, although that was a little more closed than I think it probably should be. Um, but, uh, since they should be open kiosk-type structures, you know, with a lockable storage area, um, similar to what's in that, in the, uh, the attachment, whether they buy that particular product or they have someone build one that looks pretty much identical to it, so.
The, the sixteen, I guess, kiosks that's there, um, how many of those will we say have permits? I know this is a, you know, you know, it's a touchy subject, you know, it would be very touching to me if my kiosk was shown, and I don't have a permit, so I know it's kind of touching for some people, you know? Uh, maybe it's that thing about the sack again. But I'm concerned about that simply because, you know, I heard here that we don't have any that, I would think that all sixteen of them don't have permits. If we don't have any way of trying to decide what a permitted one would look like. So, do none of them have permits, uh?
I, I, I know that the eucalyptus people have a permit, and that one is-
One out of sixteen has a permit?
I do not, I have not gone and-
Oh, I hear-
For all the people in the audience, I have not gone and checked to see, or produced a building permit for every one of these kiosks. I can tell you that there's two or three that have sprung up in over the last year, uh, that definitely don't have permits.
Well, the, the, the thought is just is that, for me, and the reason I say that is that we should know what a permitted kiosk should look like. And people that don't know me, I guess, you should know me. I'm not going to make it up up here because I want them not vote for something. I'm not going to just make it up because I think that, hey, that's a good thing to do, and then everybody thinks that, you know, at least on one side, I think I'm all right, because I made it up. And I'm saying that if the law is a certain way, then I feel like we have an obligation to uphold the standards of the city of Tarpon Springs. We don't like those standards, then we should change them. That's the way it should go, we should change what we don't like. But we shouldn't wait in the middle and say, hey, I don't like it now because it's yours. And I say, uh, to my good friend, Mr. Hulas, that you get yours in on time, more power to you, you know? But most of the people I know, that they think they can make a dollar, they're going to be trying to do it. So, I don't have a problem with that. I will be looking at, no matter which way this goes, that we do enact some type of, uh, uh- uh, uh, time period for as, uh, looking at this whole kiosk thing. To make whatever justice that we do need to make before we do find them in some places that's not the Sponge Dock area, which, you know, I, I'm concerned about some things, and, and one of them is that there's a three-year timeframe, but Mr. Valeris says that they don't need three years to do it. Uh, I'm not sure, you know, if that's the point of looking at. The other thing is that, um, if somebody could tell me, how long does it take to construct one of these things?
I, I, I would say not very long.
Because I, I hear that, you know, we, we should not do it during the season because it could disrupt everything, I, I, so tha- that would factor in as to how that goes and, um, I don't know whether that's Mr. Valeris or Ms. Valeris or former mayor, who can answer that? How long will it take to construct one of these, um, kiosks? Uh, e- either one?
Your question again, I'm sorry.
How long will it take to construct a kiosk?
The one we have now, and right now we were debating about something, uh, it is similar to the Greek periptoro, which is on every corner in Athens, in Kallinos, everywhere you see what they call a periptoro. That's why we went to that design. To answer your question, my thoughts were, there would be no construction at the docks. They would be built wherever they build them and bring it down there and put it in place like we did that. It would be one day of taking it off your truck, putting it in, and, uh, giving, what do you call it, so it doesn't blow away. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Oh, well, i- it does, except I'm not sure why we needed three years.
Well, I, I, that I don't know. I mean, I thought that was part of the codes or laws or, I, I, I don't, I don't need three years, i- if this is the question you're asking.
The, the other thing is, I guess I could ask you while you're there, are, are you willing to say that those kiosks that you're gonna build are gonna have that type of Greek architecture, then?
Right. David, I have trouble hearing, I'm sorry.
Are they gonna be a panic as far as the Greek culture is concerned? And are you willing to state that? That's what your intentions are putting that...
I say it right now. Yes, there will be exactly what they are in Athens, in Kallinos, Kos, Kalamata, wherever you wanna go in Greece, that is a standard building for a periptoro. And being that Mr., uh, I ca- I can't see, Alahuza comes from Greece, I think he can verify that. Even in the island of Kallinos, you have periptora.
Uh, thank you. A- and with that, that's the, that's the last thing that, that I'm looking to say in terms of that as I look to entertain a motion. One of the things that I did hear as to compatibility, I could tell you right now, it's hard for me to support it not being compatible if it's something that actually comes from Greece. I, I don't know, I mean, I find that as a challenge.
Let me, let me, let me answer it in this manner. When we started this thing, the reason to start is because of the failure of the business, tourist business in Tarpon Springs. I'm not a design person, I, I can't, I can't even draw a square. But I do know that something has to be done to improve the business that we've had over the two years. We can sit here and complain all day about everything. The answer is not negativity and let's don't do things. The answer is let's do things that are also compatible to the area to retain the theme which I think I've already proven, or my family has proven, that that's what we intend to do and wanna do. We were putting this together to invite the local traffic from Spring Hill all the way to Sarasota and as far east is Orlando. We did not and will not invest a penny on what's down there to compete with the stores that are down there now. We've had stores there for a hundred years. If you go to ninety-five of the stores, they all carry the same stuff. That's not what I'm interested in. It's already failing. To me, I'm eighty-five years old, I may not be here eighty-five minutes from now, but if you don't do something down there and think in a positive manner, then you're not gonna, you, you're gonna fail, period. And to answer your question again, periptoro is Greek, which is the octagon.
All right, yeah, well, you've answered my question, Mr. Valeris, and I appreciate that.
All right, I'm sorry I got into the speech, but I...
That's, that's all right.
I messed up on the, I didn't understand that I wasn't gonna be able to talk, but I'm trying to hedge in there, and it's obvious. Any other questions?
I just wanna point out the court reporter really appreciates when you speak Greek.
Well, it's just a name like, uh, Yorua is George, you know, and...
I, I, I do recognize that you have your hand up, but it, it, the, the questions that we have, it's the only thing that we need to have answered, I'll allow Mr. Valeris to elaborate a little bit on that. But after that, as I say, you know, I think that, you know, what we have here is a, uh, properly submitted application, looking at the standards that we have set as far as with the smart code and the kiosks, and, and we look at the compatibility and that Mr. Valeris is, is on record saying that he's gonna build something that, um, has a Greek design as far as what is in the island. I don't think that compatibility is an issue as we move forward. So with that, shall we entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
Uh, yeah, actually, I was gonna ask Mr. Yakulon a question very quickly, thank you. Um, Mr. Yakulon, the, the mayor just made the comment that looking at standards for review, um, and obviously that's all we can look at, looking at standards of, of, for review, he doesn't feel like compatibility is an issue. I just wanted to verify, you, you heard my comments earlier, talking about the number of kiosks and whether or not the number of kiosks could change the compatibility. In other words, maybe it is compatible because the smart code says the kiosks are okay, so maybe it is compatible if there's one kiosk on a piece of land, but is it possible for that compatibility to change if we're talking about a different number of kiosks?
Yeah, compatibility is, um, uh, it's, it's broadly defined, but you're looking at mass, scope, uh, collective appearance, um, y- you know, the number, uh, so, yes, the answer is yes, uh, you know, what may be compatible in one, uh, could, may not be compatible in multiple.
Thank you. I know Vice Mayor, you wanted to make a motion, I just wanted to get that out there.
It's not that I wanna make a motion, I just wanna make, I just want to explain what Mr. Valeris was trying to say. Uh, what's, what's trying to say is, in many places in Greece, ev- some neighborhoods, they have what they call periptoro, which means a newsstand. In a neighborhood, you probably have one building like this selling newspapers, not a group of buildings, you know, one piece of property. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about apples and oranges, it's not the same thing. I just wanna make sure that's clear for the record.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion, um...
I'm, I'm open for motion.
All right, I, I move to deny application number eleven dash sixty, Blairs partners.
Second. And would you state your ground?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, based on some of the comments I already made in regards to compatibility, particularly, um, the high density of kiosks.
Commissioner Tarrapenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
No.
Vice Malahuza?
Yes.
Yeah, Archie?
No.
We'll, uh, have a, a five minutes of recess. We'll reconvene this meeting at, uh, ten oh four. The next item that we have is, here, item number twenty-one, ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero two, ten-year water supply facilities work plan update, this is the first reading.
Ordinance twenty thirteen dash two, in ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, setting forth an adopting of amend- amendments to the intergovernmental coordination capital improvements, trustful management and conservation and utilities elements to comply with the statutory requirements update, Tarpon Springs tenure. Water supply facilities work plan to ensure consistency with SWFWMDS, other than the Swift MUDs, twenty-five gen update to the regional water supply plan, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing and/or with other responsible parties, providing for review of the pro- proposed plan amendment and transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for severability and providing effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance twenty thirteen oh two by title only. Uh, the second reading will be held on February nineteenth, two thousand and three. This is published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and it will be published again on February ninth, two thousand and thirteen.
Uh, before I go into the staff report regarding the second reading, um, if I can have that officially deferred to, um, and, oh, well, maybe I need to talk about... What meeting in April can I not have something on the agenda after elections?
The first one.
The first one. So if I go to the, uh, all right, the second reading would have, yes, so if I can defer this to the second meeting in, in April, to that, uh, date certain, um, when we advertise this, we forget, negated to realize that this has that, this, this particular amendment has to go to Department of Economic Opportunity, it'd be reviewed, and then come back for second reading. This is not a receiving file, so, um, rather than re-advertising or spending the money, but we can just defer the second reading to, to months to date certain, and that will give us ample time to receive the, get the review by the state. They al- they only have thirty days to review it, so...
All right. We need, um, motion and defer?
Just the sec- that's the second reading we can, I'll put it on the agenda again at the next, at the second meeting in February, it will be listed, and we can defer it then, and I did wanna get it on the record for anyone listening tonight.
So we'll vote on defer on next?
Yes, I just wanted to make it aware. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to disrupt.
Need to vote to approve it tonight and then defer?
Well, approve it tonight, and then this, it'll be listed on the next agenda for second reading, 'cause that's when it was advertised, and it'll be listed to be deferred at the second meeting to the date certain. I wanted to make sure it was able to do that because of the, the election meetings, so...
Any question? Any, uh, public comment? Shall we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarrapenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery? Vice Malahuza?
Yes.
Yeah, Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next item is item twenty-two, ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero three, capital improvements element, uh, annual update, first reading.
Ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero three, in ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the five years capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan as required by chapter one sixty-three, point three one seven seven, for statutes providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing and/or with other responsible parties, providing for severability and providing effective date. That's the, uh, first reading of ordinance two thousand and thirteen dash three by title only. The second reading will be held on February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. This is published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and will be published again on February ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Same thing.
Uh, this one does not need to be deferred, this one's fine. Um, this is annual updates to the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. The projects that are listed here are only, uh, derived, uh, from our capital, uh, from the capital improvements plan portion of the, the, uh, city's budget. Um, not everything is listed in this ca- in the capital improvements element, only those things that pertain to levels, projects that affect level of service standards for the city. Um, if you have any questions about particular projects, I'll do my best to answer them. Um, if I can't, I'll bring back the answer prior to second reading.
Any, uh, question? Any, uh, public comment? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarrapenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahuza?
Yes.
Yeah, Archie?
Yes. Um, we have miscellaneous item number twenty, uh, three, appointment to canvassing board, uh, you've seen the backup, um, would it seem to decide if there's somebody that, uh, here that would like to be on the canvassing board, or is it citizen, or do you think that we need someone on that, uh, canvassing, uh, board?
Mayor, if I could just clarify, um...
Yes, ma'am.
With, uh, the election contract we already approved, the county is the canvassing board. That usually consists of supervisor of elections, a judge, and a county commissioner, and that has been also how we've done it for the last few years. In the past, we've done both. If we, if y'all do decide to have someone, it's just in observer capacity only, and they would have to attend the required meetings as listed in the backup. Um, but that is a decision up to the board, it's not required that we've, you know, in past experiences, we've done both. You could either select someone, one of the sitting commissioners, or you can select, which we don't really have any applicants, but that's up to the...
It was a pleasure. Um, in the past, there's been some people that I guess they didn't trust the county in their, uh, canvassing boards, so they wanted to go down and, and watch it, so, um...
I know Mr. Delagus was interested in the past, he'll be, uh, an observer, I don't know if he still is, I don't know. But, uh, isn't he here?
No, he's not. And, uh, yeah, they meet at nine AM in the morning, and, you know, I don't, I, do I have to make a motion? Yeah? I just make a motion that we let the county commission and, uh, whoever else is appointed by the county serve on the canvassing board, we don't need a...
That's a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, we don't have any applicants, but if somebody, you know, watches this, uh, meeting, or if they hear about this, if somebody does approach us later and they want to, we could still allow someone to go and be an observer, is that correct? Or what, if we vote now not to, uh, what, what, what's the procedure for that?
The only reason I went ahead and brought it up is because, as you see, the pre- the first pre-election test is February twentieth, and I would have to advise the county if we were having an observer, and as well as whoever the observer is, if they would accept and give them information that's needed for them.
So what is the deadline? When would we need to inform the county, or...
It would have to be probably at least a week prior to the twentieth.
Okay. Thank you.
We got a motion, uh, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarrapenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery? Vice Malahuza?
Yes.
Yeah, Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next, uh, item that we have is appointment to the housing authority board, uh, nomination for vacancy, uh, of Ms. Wilson, and, uh, reappointment, uh, says recommended to reappoint with dates and a three-year term, will expire twenty-two, two thousand and fifteen, and appoint, uh, selecting applicant to fill the vacancy left by Ms. Wilson, this term will expire November twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Juliana Day to another three-year term, term will expire November twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, and appoint Robin Singer to fill the vacancy left by Ms. Wilson. This term will expire November twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
I'd, I'd like to, uh, submit the name, if, if it's all right, I mean, I, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm used to losing, so it doesn't make sense. But I, I, I did, I, I talked with Ms. Colton, uh, she asked that I would be supportive of her, and I told her that I would, so I, I do wanna... and I told her that I would, so I do wanna at least be able to tell her that I put her name in the nomination.
I'm sorry, what was that question?
Uh, Lena Combs, you said, uh, Lena Mack.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, if nobody else has his name, then everybody say they say Robin, 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 then we have a motion and-
I was just waiting for you to recognize, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I go with Lena Combs.
I mean, uh, you've already said Robin, so I said, uh, Ms. Combs.
Ms. Combs.
Thank you, sir.
Robin Sanger.
So if we can get a, a motion to, that, or we vote on the first motion and make another, whatever y'all's pleasure is on that one.
Make a new motion.
I move-
Yakovlin?
We have one.
Huh?
Yakovlin's rules of order, you can make a new motion.
All right.
I move to reappoint Juliana Day to another three-year term, which will expire November twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, and appoint Lena Combs to fill the vacancy left by Ms. Wilson, term to expire November twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, the next item we have is appointment to, uh, Code Enforcement Board, uh, nomination one vacancy, two alternates, one and two. Um, it's, uh, reappoint Justin Desti to another term, appoint Becky Archer as a regular member, appoint, uh, what's it called?
Dematis.
Dematis to fill the unexpired, unexpired term of Jeffrey Pearson, this term expires, uh, November first, two thousand fourteen, appoint, uh, someone to fill the unexpired term of Beverly Kapinski, uh, this term is two thousand thirteen, appoint someone as the alternate number one, and as the alternate number two. So we have, what, three?
Right, one vacancy and two alternates.
Well, um, can everybody agree on the ones that have been listed? And we could maybe, uh, get a motion for that and then go through the process to see if we can get, um, three people?
Motion to reappoint, I say people?
Second.
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, we go over there, that's Mr., uh, Desti, um, Ms. Archer, and Mr. Dematos.
Yeah.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, and now we have, uh, one vacancy, uh, so, um, we start with, uh, you, Commissioner Lawson.
Uh, Dan Fox?
Dan Fox will meet you.
Uh, Dan Fox is good.
Dan Fox?
I move to appoint Dan Fox.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Uh, yes, um, started this end, um, looking for an alternate, uh-
Annie Dabbs.
That's our alternate one, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Jerome Soblasky.
Uh, Mr. Soblasky.
Soblasky for me.
Shall move.
And second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, I don't know, Vice Mayor? Ms. Dabbs? Um, who's left? Smith?
Smith? Yeah, the corner.
And Coria, uh, Smith.
I'm sorry, who you have who?
Uh, Thomas Smith?
And Ms. Dabbs?
Who?
Um, um, Thomas Smith.
Ms. Dabbs. Annie Dabbs.
Can we get a motion?
Motion to appoint Ms. Dabbs.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
No. Uh, we need, what, one more? That's it?
That's just our total first.
Let's see, uh, planning zoning, uh, nominations for an alternate. Um, start with you, uh, Commissioner Satteris. Y'all want me to start?
Sure.
Uh, I talked to Ms. Garnia, Garnia, she said she was no longer interested, you know, today. Uh, Mr. Seaman?
Marlon Seaman?
Is that what she said too?
Mm-hmm.
Jacob Carr?
Jacob Carr?
Mr. Carr?
Uh, can we get a motion?
Move to appoint, uh, Mr. Carr to the fill the vacant alternate position. Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, appointment to Board of Adjustment, uh, we need an alternate, the guess is back to you, uh, no, it's, uh, you, Commissioner, uh, Satteris?
Um, Mr. Darby?
Uh, uh, Mr. Darby.
Mr. Darby.
Mr. Darby.
Mr. Darby. Uh, can we get a motion for that? And then point the two on there? Oh, and the, uh, and Mr. Hassett, uh, Tellarino, uh, in those positions that I think is, uh, well, he moves up, both of those move up, one of them moves up, the other one's being reappointed, so, we'll get that in the motion then, too. That's okay. Who made the motion?
Nobody made the motion.
I move to reappoint Lawrence, uh, hashtag for another three-year term, term to expire October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, move the current alternate Nate Tellarino, it's still the unexpired term, George Chambers, this term expired October thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, and appoint, uh, Greg Allen Darby, uh, as an alternate member. Did I say all that right?
Yep, uh, can we get a second? Second. Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next we have is appoint to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, a regular member, uh, we've got three people, I think we're back down to you, uh, Commissioner Larson.
Well, I'd first like to move that we reaffirm the, uh, following numbers that were listed, uh, Jim R., Carl Vogel, Ray Ward, John Bank, Sylvia Doobie, and, uh, Rex Wilkinson.
Can we get a second on that? Second. Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, you have a recommendation for the, um-
Can I verify that any of these three, 'cause I know some of the names were on multiple boards, are all three still? Yeah. Hey, uh, David Jacobowitz?
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Philoretto.
Uh, Mr. Jacobowitz?
Mr. Jacobowitz, whatever.
Uh, Mr. Philoretto.
What do we have there? Do we have enough?
We do, it's David Jacobowitz, we just need a motion and a second.
I make a motion that we appoint David Jacobowitz as a regular member of the Parks and Rec advisory board.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarr Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slatery?
Yes.
Vice Malahouzes?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, and that concludes our regular session agenda. Uh, chief?
Yes, Mayor, um, we have been officially told we were going before the Florida Commission for accreditation on February twenty-first, that is really excellent news, um, so we'll be sending out invites to everyone, and, um, probably shortly once our accreditation has been passed, we need everyone to have this, uh, long process and assessment, so that's it, thank you.
Uh, attorney?
No comment.
City manager?
No, I will accuse myself of, uh, comment, uh.
Madam clerk?
Comment?
Uh, Commissioner Larson?
No comment.
Vice Mayor, no comment. Uh, Commissioner Satteris? Uh, the only thing that I have, I like to talk with, uh, the city manager and that, looking at our smart code and some of the things that we dealt with tonight, boys, um, kiosks, those type of things, and whether we need to, uh, bring that back, um, to look at, you know, uh, you know, the flea market stuff, I mean, should it stay in there, are we comfortable with that? Uh, kiosks, uh, if we're comfortable, how many is the comfort level, if we don't have a comfort level?
How many are none?
Yeah, well, how many, you know, or if we don't get, don't want that in there, but as long as we have it in there, then we're gonna be dealing with that, and especially if there's a certain area that we think is appropriate, those type of things, I just think that we need to try to deal with and, um, to clean that up a little bit. Um, other than that, we'll adjourn at ten twenty-eight.
All right.